Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is May the third, 2022. It is Tuesday, time is now six P. M. Regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for the place of residence? Ms. Regal, would you please raise your hand.
I am the President and Deputy Director of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call and roll, please.
Devono.
Here.
Griego.
Here.
Obolto.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Item Mark, Google the agenda. If council have any changes they would like to make to the agenda. Hearing none, entertain the motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote.
Devono.
Yes.
Griego.
Yes.
Obolto.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Item eight, Fisher's Peak Trail access update. City Council Manager, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Bear with me, this is new technology that we're trying to do for the first time so the audience could see on screen. For some reason, of course, I can't get it. Of course. I brought paper back, so there we go. So what you have here is a map of Fisher's Peak and the property shown between basically the reserve at Fisher's Peak in Ellendale. As a background, I know there was a lot of public, I won't call it outcry, request to have a trail from downtown Trinidad up to Fisher's Peak. From those meetings, I received quite a few calls saying, wait a minute, that's going right through my property, I don't want that to go through my property. So on the map, you have in hatch, the actual Fisher's Peak property, it doesn't show the entire 20,000 acres, but shows that property. Then, of course, Ellendale, the reserve at Fisher's Peak, the reserve at Soldier's Ridge, and then right here is the Okay Corral Ranch that is a strip of land that abuts that southern part of basically Ellendale. And Mr. Osala is, I believe he's present, yep, he's here, he met with me, and that piece of property has a conservation easement in perpetuity for not only Viewshed, but with Rocky Mountain Out Foundation. I can let Mr. Osala speak to that, but basically through those covenants, you can't have a trail through there. This other L-shaped strip that's below it is owned, I believe, by four parties. I received a call from Genevieve Gerlay, she said she does not want anybody going through her property, she's one of four. Mr. Osala owns the other portion, I believe there's an Ayupa in there, and Chaminade, I believe. And I think they're all here. So what that leaves is this property that's up in the upper right corner that abuts that Fisher's Peak State Park, and that is owned by the...
Leo Montoya.
Montoya family et al., and there's, I'm told, 20 or so parties that have ownership in there. The Engleville Road, it's not showing in this map, I'm hoping I can get the other map. Let's see. This is a bigger map of the area, the state park, Engleville Road coming up from, I believe it's over gone and comes up, it ends just short of the Montoya property, it ends right there. And then from there, if you were to use that as a trail, you would have to get through that property, the state park. I know that the state park has done an extensive two-year master plan, they presented to us. I don't know if the commission has adopted it yet, but in speaking with, and we may have representatives from the state as well, that area was defined as cultural, environmental. I know they're willing to take a look at it, but in discussing with them, there was, in the two-year process, there was over 700 suggestions on what to do with the park, and there was only one, according to them, there was only one that requested a neighborhood trail up there. So I don't want to say, you know, there's no way, no how, but there's some barriers there, and so I would hope that nobody would cause us to go against our request for a grant to create a multi-use trail from basically Saddle Road to Exit 11, a 10-foot path off to the side, for pedestrian, bicycles, hikers, everything there. You can still get from downtown, of course, you've got Used Santa Fe Trail, it's like you're, in my mind, it's a shorter route with less issues. I know that there's property owners here that would like to speak, and I don't know if council, you know.
Let's start with Mr. Osala first.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Would you please remove your hat, please?
Okay.
Anybody in the audience, would you please remove your hats? Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, my name is Louis Osala, and I represent the Okay Ranch, and also have an interest in the Chaminade-Ayupa tract as well. This ownership is one mile deep and two and a half miles wide, basically running from I-25 to the northwest corner of the new state park. The Okay Ranch is under a conservation easement with the Rocky Mountain Out Foundation, that expressly prohibits any sort of trails inconsistent with that easement. I am extremely opposed and will fight any attempt for any hiking trails going through either property. The landowners up here bought and preserved the property for wildlife, and any trails would destroy the current and future use of what we protect and enjoy. This land is critical habitat for quite a few species of wildlife and birds as well. A full list is provided to you, I'll leave a copy before you, as well as a map. I am very concerned that the trail group wasn't specific about where they want to put the trails. It invites more trespassers and hikers through our property. Trespassers, hiker, campfires are an issue for us, as well as cutting all our fences, leaving gates open. I had a barrier horse that got hit on Santa Fe Trail because of a cut fence with a trespasser. I'm happy that the city and the state work very hard to put together the new state park. We leave the trails and the hiking up there, and please do not encroach on the private loan landlords that board of the park. And also have a letter here from Jerry Ayupa, he couldn't make the meeting. It has come to my attention, the city, he didn't know for sure who was planning the walking trail to the new state park, which may require access to the property I currently own. I will not allow access to my property due to liability issue it creates, as well as potential trespassing. This is not something I will consider now or in the future. And then also have a letter from Courtney to the Plaid Sheets of Quarter Interest in the Ayupa-Chaminade. Dear Trinidad City Council members and attendees, we were recently informed of a proposal to construct a regional trail from downtown Trinidad to Fisher's Peak State Park. Although we support recreational development in the community, we express our opposition to any current or future proposed trails that may contemplate a route through parcels owned by any party listed herein. As adjacent landowners to the park, our property may be considered a desirable route for the proposed trail system, and we kindly request the City of Trinidad staff and City Council to inform interested parties that a public system cannot be constructed on private property without the consent of all landowners. The use of such property for access to the state park will not be considered. And that's what I have. I have a copy here of all the wildlife and bird species that are on the property that, you know, we're currently trying to protect. And then also have a map you all could have, showing our property, the state park down here. And I'll leave this with you, and it shows the Okay Ranch, and it also shows the Chaminade-Ayupa tract.
If you will admit, Mr. Osala, I'm not sure if the audience can see this, I think we could move that map kind of so that the audience can see it a little bit better. Maybe you can step up there, and I'm not sure if you could pinpoint where that actually begins, right?
So I don't know if the audience could see it, but...
Oh.
Yeah. This is the Okay Ranch here.
Yeah, this part, so the Okay Ranch.
Why don't you look at this one, we'll get this one here, pointing toward the audience.
Okay.
You want to come around here, so I can see you, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this stretch right here, that's the Okay Ranch that's currently under the conservation easement with the Rocky Mountain Out Foundation.
And it starts where?
It starts right here behind Wendy's, right here is Wendy's. And it comes back up against the city, this is Santa Fe Trail right here. So we come up from right behind Wendy's, and we go all the way across to the second bay bit that you see looking up towards the peak.
And that's, how far is that in mile distance?
This is, that's a mile and a quarter, or a mile and a half. Now here's the Chaminade-Ayupa tract right here, it's a universal, and that basically comes in just about to the, as you go past Wendy's up there, they have that frontage road along the side, and you can see where the old Sundance Mine was, all that area right up in there, that's where the main act is into this. And then this wraps all the way out to the state park over here. And that's two and a half miles from there, from this point to that point.
Okay.
And of course, here's the, here'd be the pipeline, the old pipeline road that comes up, that comes right through here, and then the only other access would be through this or Morris Canyon, which is right here, that goes directly through our conservation easement.
Okay.
And then I'll leave this with you all for the...
Can we have them with Kim, please?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We'll just get copies for council, or that?
Thank you.
And I don't know if anybody else...
Let's, Kim, could you see who signed up to speak? I want to see if anybody that we called during the open communications might want to speak.
And just so City Council knows, I kind of put my cursor kind of where the park entrance is built right now, and where they, kind of in that general vicinity where they're going to build the Welcome Center, the Interpretive Center, or whatever they're calling it. And they're currently constructing 10 miles of trail, and it's my understanding that it goes up to the top of the peak, and, you know, it may end there through there, so it doesn't come near the edge there where we could, if somehow we were able to connect, we'd have to connect, but the state park would have to have another entrance. So right now, like I said earlier, it's going to take a lot of work, and we've got conservation easements in perpetuity, so that kind of is out of the picture, I think. There's other landowners here, the reserve here.
Mr. Netch Minos here also, he owns 50% of the...
That's why I called for the list, and what I'll do is, they were scheduled to speak, but being that we're on this subject right now, I will call them to speak at this time. So, Mr. Phelan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, honorable council, thank you for addressing this important topic. As we are all aware, economic development is essential to a thriving community, and the nature tourism of our county evolves around making all aspects of which is equally important, from biking to biking to sportsmen, activities like hunting a reality. The development of the Frenchman properties to the new Fisher Peak State Park has opened many opportunities to develop the dichotomies of all of those areas. However, even with the best of intentions and observations, restrictions and rules, there will be negative impacts when intrusions into per-cabin areas and such occur. We all hope there's cooperation in protecting those important nature areas. Private land ownership surrounding the new state park plays an equally vital role, as many of those areas have restricted development, conservation easements, and other programs implemented by private ownership to protect the land and wildlife. Many of those private landowners also have a vested interest into the downtown business units, so we balance the programs of economic development with the land stewardship. As such a member, the reserve at Soldier's Ridge fully supports the development of the Santa Fe Trail to support the new Fisher Peak State Park interconnecting the Trinidad Lake State Park, along with the abundance of work in supporting and developing the community riverwalk. A comprehensive plan of opportunities exists in developing those assets without the necessity to impact private land ownership, all of which is sufficient to develop the nature tourism of the community. On behalf of the reserve at Soldier's Ridge, I wish to thank each of you for your responsible land stewardship and the protection of private land ownership, and together, I hope we can develop a reasonable program to benefit the community for generations to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Rhonda Chaminade?
Hi. We're kind of up there, of course, we're representing the Chaminade family. So my dad is here, who is, he's like the first from Nick Chaminade, and he's just not mobile to get this close to him. So I'm going to read your letter to you first from him. It says, "I am Sam Chaminade, son of the late Nick Chaminade, and he was owner of the land," which a committee is trying and wanting to build trails through. The property, sorry, the property is now, belongs to Genevieve Gerlay, Kathy Taubin, and myself. It is not for sale and to be used by anyone other than immediate family members. There are already trails for people to enjoy at Fisher Peak State Park. I don't believe that this would be benefit to the city of Trinidad or its residents. Please raise your hand, and he's speaking to you all, if you would like the public to be walking through your backyard at any time that they would like. My father bought this land and mined it and supported his family with it. Thank you, Sam Chaminade.
I'm Nick Chaminade, grandson of Nick Chaminade, who bought the land and is being passed on to our family. It's my understanding that there are people that want to build trails through our family private land. I hunt, camp, and enjoy the land, natural beauty. When I'm hunting on this land, it would be an outrage and a liability and unsafe for people walking through the trail, that shouldn't be there, and ruining my hunting privileges. It's Colorado state law, I do not have to let anybody on the property. Anybody walking or hiking will be trespassing and will be prosecuted. Thank you.
I'm going to talk, I'm Rhonda Chaminade, and my grandfather and grandmother were born in El Moro in Berwin Canyon. They married and raised three children in Trinidad. My grandmother, who some of you may have known in your lifetime, Jenny Chaminade, was very involved in the garden club, the Italian club, the ladies auxiliary, PTA, and the Mount Carmel Church with three children, and I have four that I know. My grandfather was the president of Pacheco School Board, and he was the founder and president of Fisher Peak Fire Department, and an avid fisherman and hunter, and enjoyed being outdoors. So as you can tell, for many years, they were involved and active in the community of Trinidad for over 80 years. To push trail through the land that they were so hard to get and to acquire during hard times, which were, during the depression, I believe, would be a disgrace to their memory and to our family that they value. My family members and I are expressing our concerns regarding destruction of the natural land, the inability to use our land with the public in our backyard, illegal crimes committed on the trails, infringement on our constitutional rights as landowners of private property, liability. Trails exist, we've driven, we've driven down, it's beautiful, there are all kinds of trails. We can work together as a community, and I don't believe that trails going through people's personal property is something that Trinidad stands for. To the citizens of Trinidad, today it's our property, in the future it could be your property, that someone else is wanting to use for themselves. I strongly encourage you, as elected city council, to please put it into this land ground. I also have letters here from the rest of our family members that couldn't make it for other reasons, out of the state right now, or not able to mobilely get down here, so I have their letters. I only made one copy, so I apologize, but...
Give them to Kim, read them, and make copies for council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know this has been a very, I'm not sure exactly what I can say, other than it's been a, everybody's been wondering what is going to happen with trail to the peak. This issue came to light here just recently, and we do have to honor the ownership of the Al Foundation, the owners of the property. At this point, it does look like, I don't think there's going to be an additional trail to the peak, simply because of the owners and the conservation easement that's in place. So I'm not, I think that's about it. I don't think there's anything else that we could say, other than...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What about the Montoya land? Has anybody spoken to it?
It's my understanding that there's like 20 owners, and nobody's spoken, I have not spoken to them. They did not call. These other people did call. I just wanted to get a map that shows ownership, so council is aware that, you know, just saying we want a trail from downtown to the top of the peak, there's some hurdles. Is the Montoya property viable? That's, they're not here, but we would have to contact them in the future. As a trail is planned, that would be the first step in any process, is asking landowners, hey, would you be needable to this? If they say no, then, you know, there's eminent domain, I don't know if council has that appetite to just do that, and I didn't think so. So, and there's also the CPW, who has to agree to another entrance onto the park that they're trying to manage, and, you know, staffing that, or however they do that, I'm sure they're, they're trying to track people onto the parks, so if somebody gets lost up there, they know, or, you know, so again, that is, in my mind, a longer route than going up Santa Fe Trail, but it's an option. I mean, it's number one, before promising trails, we need to talk to the landowners.
May I say?
Sure.
I think we have to make it clear that the city isn't behind this trail project. It was presented to us to endorse, so that the city isn't actively trying to promote this trail. It's a private entity that came to us. But I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Osala and Mr. Phelan made a very good point that I hadn't thought about up till tonight, is not only are we worried about recreation, we're worried about conservation. And, you know, that's been, all of us relate to that park, that peak, that's our home, it's a symbol of where we live, but I think it's a symbol also of the wildlife and the flora that's in there that needs to be protected. And what better organization that can protect that is the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Department. I mean, they have made, they made very good decisions, I've been in meetings with some of them from the very get-go, and I just, you know, when you're a member of a community, compromise is the key. Let the state do what they've spent millions of dollars trying to promote and to build on the peak. Let's let that play out first. Maybe this is a question for other generations, but I for one do not even want to entertain any more trail assistance to that part. Can you imagine what it would take to police another trail from that area up to the peak? Let the state do what they do the best.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
I think it's important, I hear what you're saying, councilwoman, Griego, but this is the first public conversation that we've had about whether or not the city supports a trail. So when you said the city doesn't, I think it's important, we haven't ever taken a vote, and I may be the only one who's interested in that, and I understand that the city council speaks with one voice, but I think it's critical that we have a chance to talk those things through and don't necessarily shut down a different idea just because it may be what most people are thinking. And the only thing that I've ever said with regard to this is that, as all of us understand, developing an identity between Fisher's Peak and the city of Trinidad is critical. So if it's not going to be by way of a trail that you can get directly from Trinidad to Fisher's Peak, then we better think, from my perspective, of ways to associate the peak with us as a city, whether that's providing shuttles that have a picture of the peak on the side of it, but that's critical in order for us to get the economic development benefit that we're hoping for this.
One of the things to, in answer to one of your concerns, one of your questions, is having some kind of transportation. I do know that the Tourism Board is going to be purchasing a smaller van, and that van will be able to be used for that particular purpose, because it's smaller than the trolley that we have. The trolley can go there, carry more people, but the smaller van, you know, is, likely will have better access to get to the peak. And the good pictures up there, you want to put pictures on the side of it, advertising, whatever we have to do? Yeah, you're right, but I think that we need to do the best we can do with the existing trail that's going up there right now. I know that, you know, the big problem is, is that, like Mr. Valentine said, the only other possible way is going through, over by where the Montoya's property is, but it dead ends. And then on top of that, like I said... And then on top of that, like I said, it's so far, the direction that the group had wanted to do is directly from downtown to the peak. Now it would spread that over, all the way over to Gray Creek, and just extend that by miles.
Mayor, if I may, to kind of address Councilwoman Ogletree's concern, as you're aware, that we partnered with Los Angeles County Trust for Public Lands and the Nature Conservancy on a grant to do a recreation slash economic development or benefit study on how we interconnect with the park. DOLA recognized that, and we applied, well, we didn't apply, we were joint, county is the main applicant on that grant, and we're, we joined with them to study just that. How do we interconnect with the park? That's the process where we're going to vet out, is it trails, is it Santa Fe Trail, is it up Ingleville Hill, is it, but it's also a county-wide recreation study to capitalize on now two state parks. The state park is moving so fast that we're trying to keep up with the studies and make sure that we don't just shoot out there from the hip, but make sure we vet every idea, we have public input, we don't just come behind the doors and say, we want a trail up to the top of the peak, and then, then council is put in a spot where it's like, well, nobody's brought that before us yet. So, this is just trying to show you the work that has to be done, the work that should have been done prior, and moving forward, I'm hoping this study gets in all stakeholders and that we get all input into that planning process, just like the state park did. We're actually using, through the committee, we selected THK who did the state park master plan. We had three applications, and of course, it was county-wise, and THK came out on top. So, if you recall the way, they're kind of modeling the recreation interconnectivity study the same way they're doing, did the state park, so there will be time for everyone in the community to join in and put their ideas in and come out with a good plan, so.
Well, you know, one of the things that, when this whole Fisher Peak idea came about, was not only to have a state park, or not, not that we didn't know anything about a state park at that point, but to have a park up there, was to keep it as pristine as we possibly could. That's what the CPW has done. I did not know until just recently, like I said, that some of the grounds that are in this conservation easement are grounds for habitat during, I guess, wintering, so that is all part of conservation. So, you know, that was something that I did not know, that that was where they're, you know, where they had their young and till the fall. So, like I said, I think it's, anyway, we move forward, and this study that you're talking about, we'll just have to sit with the county and see where we go from there.
Correct.
Okay. All right? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Item 3B, a website update, Ms. Anvil, City Clerk's office?
Hi.
I'm stage one.
I love nature. Good evening, hope everyone's well tonight. So I've been working on our current website editing content for quite some time now. I'm not sure if you all get that. The content, landing, agendas, public notices, RFPs, bids, and any items that come forth for me to add, edit, or delete. Our current website is not free of flaws by Enn and me. It's not based on a what you see is what you get model. Each page we put on the website must be ADA compliant and follow the WCAG 2.0 guidelines, which is web content accessibility. For instance, photos and videos must be captioned, certain colors, tables, and even PDFs aren't accessible. So we have to think about that before we put it on our website. The easiest way to maintain the content, for me, has been to copy and paste it from a Word document into the content management system, which is the back end of the website, and then put it into an HTML format, which is ADA compliant. Currently, we have a company called Siteimprove that crawls our website, and it basically searches it for ADA compliance, and it grades it accordingly. So, right now, our website has, is in the nineties. So we've got an A for our accessibility and our quality assurance. So, either I or Kim Palam will go into that site, and they give you pointers on how to fix it, and we'll fix it, and it will make our score go up. Granted, our pages are not pretty, but we've opted to be on the safer side than sorry. Kristy Rogers was hired to help with the RFP for the new website design. Part of that process involved Kristy scheduling demos with prospective companies, which I and Kim Palam had part in. On February 25th, the RFP was posted on our website. All companies, including our current designer, were sent an invitation to submit their proposal. These proposals were due on March 18th. Six companies submitted their RFPs for the website, and the proposals were viewed by myself and Kim Palam. Of the six companies, we chose three of them to demonstrate their products, excuse me, based on the features that we felt were most important. That included content editing ease, tech support, training, and whether or not we could custom build the site. Our current site, we weren't able to custom build it, it was designed with our choice. So I selected a group to participate in the choosing. Kim Palam, myself, Audra, Sarah Dixon, who does our social media, Wally Wallace, our economic development director, Marty Hackett in tourism, and Blanca Terrace from IT. The three companies' names were Jesse James, Vinyl Site, and Revised. Of those three companies, we unanimously chose Revised. In your packet, I attached the features and functionalities that will be included. Just some of the key features, their search engine, it's similar to Apple, kind of like an iPhone, like when you ask Siri to find something, it'll search the most important things, and if, like, you misspell something, it'll still bring you to that page. They offer a custom design, and I could send it back multiple times if we don't like it. They offer unlimited training along with videos, an internet, form builders, tech support, job posting apps, and many more things. The main draw is, in the fourth year of being with this company, they offer a new web redesign, which, who doesn't like a new coat of paint, right? So our budget for this project is forty thousand. A revised price tag was thirty-eight, seven, and fifty-nine hundred each additional year. Evo Gov, which is our current host, costs twelve thousand eight hundred, and then fifteen hundred annually. And they don't offer nearly as much as what Revised will, and, you know, you pay for what you get. So we're opting to go with a better company and try to get our website where it needs to be. I've also attached a timeline, so the average to complete this project would be sixteen to twenty-one weeks, depending on if we send the design back multiple times. The kickoff meeting is scheduled for May 18th, so I'm super excited for that. I've been asked to be the lead on this project, something that I didn't do before, so my job description has been amended to fit that. And other than that, that's basically it. And questions?
Got some questions, Penny, Mr. Yvonne?
No, I have none right now.
Seems like you vetted him pretty well, Desiree. So, so, four to six weeks, did you say?
Uh, sixteen to twenty-one.
Okay, sorry. Sixteen to twenty-one, so twenty-one being the...
The max.
It's on, or it's usable on the...
So we, our current website doesn't go away. We'll still have access to our content management system to make changes, and then when they, when we go live, then that company goes away, and then the new one.
Will we have a chance to preview it?
We can probably do a work session, and I can come up with some ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a lot of ideas.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Des, you're doing a good job.
Thank you for the work that you're doing, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Des.
Thanks.
Really thorough update, appreciate the job, Des.
Couple of things I just want to mention, you know, I saw in there about the go-live instructions for the, it says for go-live only upon a request. What was that all, could you explain what that was all about?
Um...
Last page.
The last page?
Yeah.
That kind of concerned me, that to go, the go-live instructions would have to be requested, that was kind of odd.
On the features and functionality page?
Yeah, timeline, I think.
Oh, so that's, um, let's see, I think that's if everything is okay, I'm not too sure I can ask about that.
Yeah, if you clarify that, because if we have to get permission or request at an extra cost or whatever for the instructions, the go-live instruction should be included, I would think.
Yeah, it says, it says here it's a relatively quick process, moving from the old site to the new site. I can't see where you're seeing it, I guess I'm looking in the right spot.
Look into it and you'll see.
I will.
If I see it tomorrow, I'll call you and mention it.
Okay, thanks.
The other thing I was going to mention, this is for pretty much the audience, is that, you know, we have a lot of complaints about communication, and when this is up and running, we pretty much do what we've been wanting to do, is to keep the public more aware of what's going on, looking at all the features that are available, that will be available, making use of all these features is going to be essential, so that the public can access what we're doing. And the biggest thing, of course, is to make sure that we're able to fill in the blanks, whether it's on a daily basis, weekly basis, or whatever, do we have the staff to make sure that that is done on a timely manner, so. But anyways, thank you for all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Where'd you go?
Thanks.
Item four, petitions or communications. Start off with the South Central Council Governments Executive Director, Jennifer Oliver.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm four. I have to reach, so. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Jennifer Oliver, and as you introduced, I'm the new executive director as of a month ago, basically. So, I come here, new to Trinidad, I come here from Reno, Nevada, which is northwest Nevada, not Vegas. I'm really excited to be here. I'm excited to bring my experience, I've worked over twenty years in local government, and I've worked with nonprofits, strategic planning, communication, so I was really excited about the opportunity to come here and work on a regional level with the exciting opportunities that are coming to Trinidad and to Walsenburg, and to basically Los Angeles and more general counties. So, I love to meet people, I'm doing my kind of roadshow, walking around, going out to as many organizations and talking to people and getting to know the community. And so I've felt welcome arms already, and I'm really excited to be here, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
If anybody has any questions, well, it's welcome to Trinidad, and I'm sure you'll continue to do an excellent job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, I'll come visit you and be on the radio.
Yes.
Now, I'm going to let you slide tonight.
No worries.
No, welcome to Trinidad.
Thank you, thank you. Very happy to be here.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Saying welcome, yeah, appreciate it.
Can't wait to know you.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, for sure. I would just like to say we, at the Board of Council of Governments, really enjoyed and appreciated the interview process, the hiring process, and we're super optimistic and looking forward to great things to come, so thank you very much.
For the audience information, Mr. Williamson is the liaison to the Council of Governments for the city of Trinidad and the city council. So, I just wanted to say welcome, and the Council of Governments is a very integral part of a community, and of this community. And I think it's very important that, because we're looking out, we're in the process of trying to find a new city manager.
Yes.
So wherever that city manager is, hopefully that you can develop good, positive working relationships.
Absolutely, yes.
And being able, because I do know that a lot of CDBG money's come through, and utilizing that money for the city or county, these are things that we need to work together on, for the benefit of the entire, not only the city of Trinidad, but the entire region that will be working on Los Angeles.
And that's the beauty of the Council of Governments, is you have, that enables smaller counties, smaller municipalities to leverage some major federal and state dollars, and that's, that's the exciting piece, is to be able to benefit the residents and maintain that rural quality of life that everyone enjoys being here.
Sometime I'll give you a call, we'll sit down, we'll talk a little bit.
Appreciate it.
Get to know you a little bit better.
Look forward to it.
And do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, let's see, more petitions and communications, we have Mr. Carlos Lopez.
Hello, Mayor, Council, staff, hope you all are doing well. I come before you tonight pertaining to some issues with graffiti that are going on. They're always going on. It is unfortunate, but I sent you all an email earlier today with the photos because I didn't want to bring them on a drive, because some of them are, there's vulgarities that don't need to be out there, but it's still important that we take care of these issues. Right now, we have a beautiful Boulevard addition, which we worked very hard to get open finally, and it's really sad that after we get through with our river cleanups periodically, that I help with periodically, it's on both my wife and others, that as you go through underneath the interstate, there's just graffiti all over on those beautiful pillars. And it's really unfortunate that it occurs, but yet it's, it's a weed, it's always something that we've got to deal with, unfortunately. But, I come with a solution, and that's why I put that link into the email, I gave one to you and to Ms. Garrett as well, so that way, I don't know if it's doubling down on what Ms. Desiree just spoke about, if it entails that with that new software capability, but it's a program called See Click Fix. I've mentioned it to you before, I think you may have even seen it before at some of the CML conferences that we've attended, but basically it gives access for citizens to make a direct kind of comment on something that is troublesome, whether it's roads, vandalism, disrepairs, maybe a water main that has broken, so that way we can have direct contact to the public works department, or whichever department it may entail for that matter. And what it'll do is it creates a real connectivity of communication between the citizens and the city staff, and from there, you have a status update of, okay, this got sent to employee X. Employee X is now writing down in the software what they're about to do, what's going to happen, and again, it keeps that information going between that consumer or citizen directly, so therefore you don't have these complaints that come through from us, like, hey, this is really bad, we need to fix this, why aren't you doing this? It's nothing that you or the staff aren't doing, but maybe they're just not aware. And it's just that simple communication factor, which you alluded to a moment ago, having better communication will behoove us all, so that way the community is a much nicer community. And we feel safer when we're walking down and don't see, you know, things on trash cans spray painted in the Boulevard, I didn't take pictures of those ones. I think they're pretty juvenile, and probably just some young punk trying to make a statement of some sort, but still, though, if you have a family coming down there, they don't want to see these things, when they're trying to enjoy that beautiful park that we've worked so hard to get going. So, again, the program is called See Click Fix, they do have software and integrated training that will work with our community members and also our staff. I believe it's a wise investment, now that we are trying to promote so much walkability in Trinidad and other open outdoor parks and things like that. So, I know we don't typically go for questions, but I just noticed you gave other questions to other people, so if you have any questions for me pertaining to this?
Not on this, but that other question, Mike, it was a different...
I'm sorry, I thought that was oral communications portion, that's kind of a protocol challenge.
No, that wasn't policy, that was...
She was, no, sorry, okay, whatever.
It was a segue.
Okay, noted now. So, anyway, it's a great program, I wish that you would all look into it, do your own homework. We had a very good rep that was, I guess, kind of soliciting me years ago, and it just, it wasn't in the cards then, but I know that our budgets have been growing, and if that's in the cards for the 2023 budget, I think it'd be a wise program to implement as a toolkit for you, for city staff, so that way they can have constant communication with the citizens who are bringing these gripes, so it doesn't come here and get kind of icky.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard Lanning.
Welcome. How's everybody tonight?
Good.
Beautiful spring night. Of course, most of you know who I am, Howard Lackey. I've been around. Our family's been here since the 1890s. The old story is, my great-great-granddad said that, you know, the wheel fell off of Trinidad and we're still looking for parts. So hopefully we'll find those parts someday. All right, well, I'm gonna talk about, I don't like talking about myself, but I just want to talk about a few things that I've been involved in that are extremely important for the city, and there's some questions I'd like to ask you, and I don't want to have you all think about it. River history. We've been working on this river to get it cleaned up, get it to be a useful part of our community and become part of a community pride thing since about 2005. And as my esteemed attorney over here likes to say, we now have fish in the river. He throws rocks at them, the rest of us still flies. But what I would like to question and kind of get some clarity on, you know, in those years, we've done three studies about the Purgatory River, its viability, the facts of the processes that we need to go through to develop it the way we have, going from a river with not much appeal to a river that has a lot of appeal and fish and fun and quite an opportunity for the folks in Trinidad. So I just have to, my own inquisitive mind has to ask, why the city spent $200,000 on a study that didn't really need to be done? You've got everything here that you guys have needed for whatever you're trying to do. And the problem is, we've worked with the folks that are in the middle of this exercise, and I'd hate to say it, guys, but they have created such an animosity towards the irrigators and Corps of Engineer and everybody else, and caused us to lose the GOCO grant, so I think you need to reevaluate what you're doing here. One of the things, and Aaron Williamson, before you were with Evergreen, you were with Pioneer, right?
Yes, sir.
And Pioneer was a great partner, you know, and we all worked together to a... I had to get thrown out of five irrigation meetings before I finally got to talk to them about what we could do with their river, their water. They own the water, but let's make it better. Let's make it better for them, make it better for us, make it better for everybody involved here. We need to really look at the city's requirements for the dam compact, because, you know, and honestly, you have not lived up to part of your obligation to keep the riverbed clear of invasive species, woody material, a whole bunch of different things. PWP and a couple of us groups have been down there with chainsaws, been cleaning things up, been putting a lot of effort into that river to make sure that that river is something we should be proud of. And we have a very good reputation upstate with GOCO and with everybody else, because we do what we say we're gonna do. Right now, the city not so much, so I think you all need to do a little soul searching here, figure out how can we get back the good graces, because this is one of the major aspects of this community that's gonna make this community a place that people want to come to. It's beautiful. Some of you have been down there with some of our projects. I wish more would get in there more often, but it's a source of pride that the community's got, and it's a source of a very good quality of life process. And we need to make sure that we keep that going. We also need to rely more on local experts. Experts, just because they're 200 miles away, doesn't mean they know what they're doing in Trinidad. Call it out, because we are a unique part of the world, as you can all attest, with family and everything else. We also have to communicate. The city has to communicate with the people that are involved in this thing every day to do what needs to be done. Thank you. I'm number one. I love that.
Yes, you are number one. Number one.
So my last comment here is the fact that these are all the experts right out here, these people that are involved in all the projects that they're involved in, whether it's parks and rec, whether it's river, whether it's arts, crafts, whatever it is, these are the experts. And the communication has to be with them, has to be with us. We're invested here. I've been in business 36 years and everything else, as have the rest of you. Please, think about what you need to do. Think about who you need to talk to, and let's quit sending this money to places that don't really care who we are. All right? Thank you. Okay, everybody clap beers afterwards, huh? And if any of you would like to see the studies, they're very tense, they're very technical, and they are very worthwhile to read. Thank you.
Can't comment on that particular, what Mr. Lackey said, but I will when at the end of the meeting, when it's, you know, the council's time to speak.
Okay, any questions, please, please ask, because we'll do our best to answer them.
Mr. Pat Hollitt.
Mary Rico, City Council, staff. Always good to see you all. I bring you good news and potential solutions. I'm looking at the 2017 comprehensive plan, and in the 2017 comprehensive, 50 people, 50 Trinidadians, and 30 organizations, and Mary Rico is still one of the only folks that was part of this at that time, but there was great work done in here. And I think what we're doing sometimes is going out and getting more studies. We have a 2009 Trails study that was amended and updated in 2015, and we still have questions with regards to trails. But I want to draw your attention to the, and if you haven't really dived into that 2017 comprehensive plan, I would encourage you to really do that. It's our game plan. That's why it's called a comprehensive plan. And just because the people who put that together aren't in seats anymore, it doesn't mean that they didn't do incredibly good work, because they did. There's a lot of good stuff in there. And a lot of things that come before you now were addressed and answered and laid out in that comprehensive plan by the mayor and the great folks that were working on that. So if you look at right now, we're starting with what Howard just brought up. We have a Chapter 6 Recreation Tourism Cultural Resources, page 39. It sets out the goals and strategies, starting on page 40, protect and enhance the Purgatory Corridor. And if you go to page 41, goals and strategies, work with partners, landowners, community organizations, and volunteers to market and promote the recreation amenities, cultural history, and cultural resources. This sets up, which we already have working, Howard mentioned a couple of them, Purgatory Watershed partnerships and their volunteers, Trinidad Trails Alliance volunteers, Trinidad Trails Facebook group members. It says to ensure long-term sustainability and community initiatives. Again, this is 2017, okay, 2019. Chapter 8 goes on to implement, the implementation program portion of this. Now, implementation is what you're guided to actually move forward to. These are your own words, this community's words, and the community's plan, the community's implementation plan. And so while our comprehensive plan establishes overall vision of future growth and developing the implementation program provides detailed action sets that the city and its partners will need to undertake to achieve the planned vision. There's a framework for implementation. There's responsible parties outlined in that. There's leads that are defined, who's a lead, and there's champions who you already have seen. They're already on the river. They're already working. The implementation timing should be reviewed and updated on an annual basis or as needed to ensure the program remains current and reflects our progress over time. We're not doing that. We're just not. Action plans start on page 48. River-related action plans start on page 52. It will show where the current river plan, we're doing more plans, we're paying more money, is having challenges with stakeholders and also challengers. I highly recommend we slow down on commissioning new plans and new studies until we align some of the current old plans and implementation plans that we've already paid for and invested in. Just because a new board gets here doesn't mean we forget that there were already other brothers and sisters and neighbors and whatever doing great work. The other thing, and also I'll be quick, one thing that I think is hurting us, and I say us, is I would like to be assured that the city attorney start to discontinue using his report, legal report time, as an opportunity to criticize citizens who come forward and take part in public comments like this and this opportunity. In frankness, it's not appropriate. It's not appropriate.
One minute, sir.
And I'm number one. Go back and look at the, just go to those videos. Using words like "you people," "shame on you," "you are volunteers," it's not legal counsel, and it's not appropriate. You are not volunteers. You are elected empowered representatives. Your work is you people's work. This language is not a city attorney's report. Many times it gets personal. There are things said like, "I shouldn't say 'shame on you.'" Oh, there I said it. Sorry, and there's chuckles. It's inappropriate. It's not legal counsel. It's not what the city needs to be represented in. And so what I would like to try and have the city attorney do is reconsider some of his words, because it's not an opportunity to attack folks that have come up here and said things. It's, was there anything that he has legal report, legal to report on? And so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ziches?
Can't do that. I'm not certain of the protocol. I've got handouts. Is that okay to give at least? Just take one pass around. Should be enough to go around there. What you see on the top, as that comes around, on December 30th of 2021, for those in the audience that don't know, this is in regard to my liquor license application that was approved. However, it has not been issued. That's been since January 4th of this year. Is the camera still working? Because the screenings, I didn't know. Thank you. On December 30th, my attorney submitted to the city attorney that map. And in response to that, the city attorney asked, which plan is Mr. Ziches going with? Mind you, this is December 30th, right before the council meeting where y'all approved my liquor license application. There should have been no question what plan. It's specifically dated. It's listed as an amendment. There should be no question. That was the map that was submitted for your approval. It will also note time there, the area in green does not include either one of the two buildings on my property. Therefore, a certificate of occupancy is not required. There are no ADA requirements that are documented anywhere that are required, even though last year I did have ADA bathrooms, and until that corporation was sold to another, I did. And I'll do what I can to replace those, because it's in my best interest. Doesn't need to be a regulation. So to this date, I still have no reasoning provided in writing, backed by regulation, why my liquor license is not being issued. Mr. Mayor, you started this meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance. At the very end, it says, "with liberty and justice for all." Where's my justice? I get no rules and no regulations specifically stating why you can't issue my liquor license. In closing, it's my opinion that the city clerk remains stuck in her position, refusing to issue the liquor license, yet has no legal or regulatory grounds to do so. I'm sorry.
We were just, she was looking at the map, that's all.
We have to share.
Sorry, we didn't need to interrupt.
Oh, that's okay. You need another one?
No, no, we're fine.
Okay. Continuing on, in fact, there's nothing in writing in the city charter providing her any latitude from which to not issue the liquor license. It is specifically states it's her requirement. Doesn't give her latitude to decide when she gets to, when she does not, what rules and requirements. It just states she issues the liquor license. In my opinion, the city manager has derelict in his duty to support and carry out the approvals made by the city council. My attorney asked for a sit-down meeting. However, he got a response from the city attorney who says Mr. Valentine is retiring. Yet three months later, he still sits here, presumably getting paid. It's unacceptable. In my opinion, the city attorney has not competently advised the city officials. So on April 27th, I asked Mr. Landry, my counsel, to submit the CGIA notice, which has included with this, to Mr. Downs. The city and Mr. Downs has 90 dates by which to reply, or we will move forward, obviously with intent to sue. And that's what it states.
Forty seconds, Mr. Ziches.
There's an old military phrase that comes to mind here. Bad news does not get better with time. For those of you that like to do research, go to the state of New York. I was sued by municipality there. I won. I have the tenacity. I will do it again. Thank you for your time.
Madam Roca?
Good evening, everyone. This is actually my first city council meeting in five years. I believe the last time I was here, I invited everyone to come on a city tour to show what an open space mountain park system would look like here in Trinidad. I'm just gonna speak here briefly on Howard's presentation that he just gave a few minutes ago, and especially about this whole idea of pushing opportunity to the outside versus taking advantage of the resources that we have here in town. I've been on the receiving end of that. I created a campaign in 2019 that essentially was the first gravel cycling tourism campaign anywhere in the world, believe it or not, happened in Trinidad, led to this book. We are happening right now, and it's gonna be happening moving forward. This book, for example, is hitting every business in town. Our restaurants are seeing people. Our hotels are seeing people. Things are happening. But I've always wondered whether or not this local government has the commitment to building an outdoor recreation industry. And when you have partners that get ignored, pushed aside, it's disheartening, because it's really hard work to do this stuff. And if you have passionate people, you gotta support them. I know that, you know, one of the things I said very early on coming here was that I knew a lot of people, that I'm very well connected. You'd be surprised at how many people I know and talk to about a lot of things in the outdoor recreation industry, not only in Trinidad, but at state level. This is now taking me to other destinations around the country. People are coming here. I've recently hosted another Colorado Tourism Board here to learn about what we're doing, but nobody ever supported anything that I did over the last several years. So my question again is, is this board really committed to building an outdoor recreation industry, especially now that we know cannabis is pretty much gonna be done for what, you know, for what it's done? If you walk around town right now, you're gonna see a lot less Texas plates. We're on the precipice of change right now, and we need leadership, and we need people who are actually committed to making things happen. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Got a Matthew Vigeland?
Evening, folks. I've lived in this community for close to 10 years, almost long enough to be just an outsider here. And I've always kept a fair distance from city government. There's reasons for that. But recently, I no longer feel like I can or should continue to remain quiet. This is a town, as everyone here knows, that has been a boom bust, been in a boom bust cycle since forever, with coal, oil, natural gas. I got here in 2013, right when New Elk was shutting down the most recent time, and this was a ghost town. My recollection is that the Bellaluna was not the only business that was open on Main Street in this community at that time. For several years, a number of different shops and restaurants cycled through here, some of the other storefronts, nothing was ever able to stick. Colorado finally got marijuana spun up after that passed the ballot, and from my perspective, that's when things started to change. My particular professional experience, I think that that has been a little bit of a mixed bag for this community, but it's hard to argue economically. It has been a huge boon for the most recent boom in this economy. Marijuana, though, was always a short-term solution. I've been making jokes for years about how eventually other states are going to legalize marijuana, and it's going to cut off our cash crop. People are only coming here to buy weed because it's the closest place to buy marijuana to where those folks live. People are only coming here to buy weed because it's the closest place to buy marijuana to where those folks live. I remember some years ago, a seminar function with you councilperson Ogletree shortly after you arrived. And I remember a comment about the number of marijuana stores in this community and the fact that even more were continuing to go up and licenses were continuing to be issued. How can this little community constantly hold the top spot in this state for per capita marijuana sales? And the answer to those questions then, as it is, at least for now, is this. We sell marijuana to massive populations in Arizona, New Mexico, Texas, and Oklahoma. The majority of our weed sales are not weed tourism. They're not people coming here to buy marijuana instead. It's marijuana that's going out of state to fill their black markets. They only go through New Mexico because they have to. So with the legalization of marijuana in New Mexico and recently passage in the United States House of Representatives to legalize that substance federally, the jig is up. The writing's on the wall. Marijuana, as it has propped up the economy in this town, is on its way out. We're going bust. There are people that have been trying to diversify this economy and there are people who have some ideas in this community with various different opportunities. And there are people already who have addressed this council this evening and I expect there to be more. Um, and I think that those, those are some of the voices we need to be listening to. And this council, I don't think from my perspective, has listened to those voices in the past. Last week, there were a number of people who appeared here and protested the firing of Sky Tallman. I was here to support those folks and to see what this council's response would be. It was disappointing to see the summary dismissal of those concerns and what those people had to say. But I was aghast at the reaction of this council and you, Mr. Mayor, to the gentleman from Canico who got up here to explain that their numbers are way down and that they're looking for a new, different license that can diversify their business in the marijuana ecosystem. The blind optimism in the face of hard numbers and reality from people who have invested their own money in Canico, I found frankly appalling. Hearing the hand wave dismissal of those concerns and that a chuckly marijuana will come back and everything will be fine, I found to be disheartening at best.
One minute.
This council cannot continue to leave its head in this and hope that things will just be fine like they always have been. Because if history has taught us anything, it's that when this town pins its hopes on a single source primary economy, things never work out fine. And so I hope that this council can listen to some of the voices and stop driving out people who have new ideas which may be different like Mr. Lopez and like Mr. Delaroca. Thank you.
You're on item five consent agenda. I may approve the special meeting minutes of April the 12th, 2022. What's that?
Art Fest Board.
Is there somebody on the address?
Oh. Oh, yes. Sir, there is, Mayor, the Trinidad Art Fest Program.
Okay. Who's on the Trinidad Art Fest Board?
We'll be quick.
Hello, Mayor and Council. We are coming to you today to talk about something that's exciting for Trinidad. We are a portion of the Board of the Trinidad Arts Fest. Trinidad Arts Fest is a nonprofit whose sole purpose is to start an arts festival in Trinidad. The first ever Trinidad Arts Fest is scheduled for Sunday, July 17th this year. Couple of months away. We're working hard. We are excited to partner with the Mitchell Museum's Quick Draw Event as well. The currently, the plan is to have the main portion of the festival at Chino Park. We hope to have thirty artist booths. We are currently trying to recruit our in-town artists as well as artists from other states. Um, we are going to have live music and food trucks at Chino Park. The Quick Draw Event, oh, excuse me. Uh, the Quick Draw Event, along with the Arts Festival's award ceremony, will be held at Sister Blandina Park. Myself and the rest of the Board represent a diverse group of Trinidad artists whose desire to help that Trinidad on the map as an artist community. We hope by starting a festival, it will help foster this budding artist community. We have raised a considerable amount of funds, most from the generous donation of the Long Enterprises. We hope that she will consider supporting Trinidad Art Fest either financially or by coming to the event. We would like to be on the agenda at future meetings so we can tell you more about our new event. Um, if you do come to the event, please purchase something from some of our exciting artists. Um, it helps get our artists to come back year after year. And we thank you and we hope to see you on July 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all, that's everybody. On the item five consent agenda approval. I may approve the special meeting minutes of April 12th, 2022. Regular meeting minutes of April the 19th, 2022. Item B, Special Event Permit Application, malt, venus, and spirituous. Allowed by Trinidad, Los Angeles County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce at 201 West Main Street on Lady 7th, 2022. Mr. Marrow, are you here? I think I saw him. Thank you for being here. Approval of the bills, item C, for one million, one hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and seven cents. Item D, Approval of payroll of April the 30th, 2022 to May the 13th, 2022 for four hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-three cents. entertain a motion. Second?
Second.
Call the vote?
Devona?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
You're in like. Don't have to make a speech.
Item six, public hearings. Six eight, public hearing for consideration of the Nordans amending chapter three. Alcohol and beverages in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Trinidad regarding alcohol beverage festivals. Hearing is now open. Uh, Ms. Garrett is not here. Who's going to present?
I'm the mayor. I'm, I'm more than happy to. This is the simple third council from a second reading. There has been a discussion of this item at a work session and also, of course, this was last on the agenda, the last regular meeting. Um, as you will recall, this advanced on a four to three vote. There were some concerns, but, um, rather than go through it all, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. Any questions for councilmen elected? We have some pretty thorough discussion, Mr. Blom.
No questions.
We'll wait till we come back.
I don't have any additional questions.
One more question? Eric, any questions?
Less the, um, the limitation, uh, as to the number of, um, festivals that will be allowed. Can, can you explain that reasoning one more time, please?
Well, I, I can and I know that some of you don't agree with it. I mean, um, the, the reasoning is, especially as it applies to festivals at thoroughfares, like I used repeatedly an example of a festival at the, uh, the intersection of Main and Commercial. That that would essentially, I mean, presuming that would be on a weekend, it would close that intersection down for the duration of that festival. And this ordinance combined with special event permits and also entertainment district events could result in, if we kind of over generalize or fine over generalize and say there are basically twelve summer weekends per summer season. If this was four and you had a number of events of the other two kinds of events at that intersection, it could result in that intersection being closed down for a majority of, you know, for all the weekends potentially in the summer season. If, if that were to happen.
I have two more questions if I may. Of, of the summer festivals that we have, I just wanted to reiterate this, um, the four main ones that we spoke of. None, none of those fall under this type of festival.
Correct.
Okay. Then, um, for the sake of discussion, if this went through as written and we have three and, and something came about that a fourth was requested and everybody agreed that it should happen, what would it take to unwind this to allow that to happen?
It would take, um, it, it would take a proposed amendment to the ordinance. That's all. So it would take a regular council meeting, but it would be the regular course for amending an ordinance.
Then that, that could happen as soon as the next regular council meeting, that's pretty easy.
Well, there's a time period. I mean, yes, it could.
Posting all, all.
Right, exactly. All, all the requirements. But yes, it could be amended in, in short order if you were to immediately change your mind and there was a consensus of council.
I have no further question.
Yeah. None of them? Go ahead.
If none of the, the festivals that we're having fall underneath this, then those are the festivals that created a pushback from business owners of some, some of the business owners. What does this have to do with that? That, that doesn't ameliorate the concerns that they raised about keeping the, the sidewalks clear or, um, parking considerations. So I, I feel like this is, as I said before, I feel like this is a solution in search of a problem. Um, I don't think, I think it's unnecessary.
No limit to, yes.
Mayor, can you, well, never mind.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience or online that wants to speak for or against the ordinance?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darielle Weaver. Um, I have spent the last couple of weeks since this came up at the last meeting, um, thinking about this ordinance and talking to my friends who are business owners and restaurant owners and entrepreneurs here in Trinidad. And actions speak louder than words. You can't call yourself an arts and tourism destination when you try to limit or prevent things that would bring artists and tourists here. Um, the concerns, um, as far as, I think there was a concern about paying for security uh, that was raised at the last meeting. Those things can be addressed, uh, through contracts, through the permits that are issued. If we get creative about how those are issued and put a little work and a little thought into what, um, what festivals are allowed, uh, certainly a condition could be that, uh, the festival has to pay for security and that alleviates that burden on our law enforcement. Um, I'm not sure what Mr. Downs is being paid for if not to draft contracts and permits that address those concerns. And I'm a little concerned frankly, that this appears to be his idea and his pet issue that he's advocating for rather than coming from the elected body who sets policy in this city. Our business owners do see financial bumps during festivals, even real, even retail, uh, retail businesses. It's not just the bars and restaurants that see it. Retail businesses, jewelry stores, our shops here, uh, on Main Street and on Commercial, they see bumps in their businesses when these tourists are here. Um, even those festivals that are put on by out of towners. Uh, it's foolish to think that people will come from Denver to this festival, sleep in their cars, eat nothing, drink nothing, buy nothing, uh, and then leave. Uh, if there's feet in the street, there are feet in the stores. I heard some concerns last week of maybe all these people from Denver are going to come down and hold all these festivals and then they're going to go back to Denver and take their money with them. Um, I would ask, who cares if Denver folks make money? Our small businesses also make money. A rising tide lifts all ships. Are we willing to sacrifice our own local businesses on the altar of disdain for outsiders? When you strip away all the excuses, what this ordinance seems to boil down to is lazy protectionism, a hostility to outsiders, and an antipathy to progress. I also, uh, want to say when people in this room clap, they are expressing support for citizens coming to our government for a redress of grievances. Counsel or law enforcement telling us not to express our support for those people is a violation of our right to speak and assemble. Violating our rights because you don't like what we have to say or because you want to get out early is not just a bad look, it is illegal. Thank you.
Let me go comment at this point in time. I was going to wait till. Came around to.
Don't be too loud on the speaker.
Yes.
Oh, I, you're going to speak against this ordinance.
Go ahead. There's, there's a couple of people online with their hands raised as well.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I come to you as a Main Street business owner. I deeply disagree with letting Trinidad's festivals that may have alcoholic beverages only for a year. These are some of our best days of business at Fisher's Peak Outfitters. And they have, uh, some of the best days of our business at Fisher's Peak Outfitters have historically been on festival days. I believe this is a knee jerk reaction and is fear based. I base this statement on Mr. Downs expressing that brewery could come to Trinidad and have a three day festival. This was not only a silly example. It is far fetched because most of our cities' festivals are homegrown. The only non-homegrown festival is the Rad Dirt Fest. I've been working hard with the Rad Dirt Fest to help integrate the festival to Trinidad and to show them what Trinidad has to offer. Today, I was walking up with a member of the Rad Dirt Fest, uh, team around downtown Trinidad when we ran into Mr. Rico. I was very disappointed and shocked that Mr. Rico looked her straight in the eye and said, "Oh, is that festival still happening?"
I did not say that.
Yes, sir, you did. Yes, sir, you did.
Disagree with you.
He was shocked to discover that they planned to have eight to thousand racers this year. And these racers bring family and friends and support staff. How could the mayor not know that such a large event was happening in Trinidad? I bring this up to demonstrate. And we had to do a ton of damage control after what you said, a ton at our shop. To demonstrate, if the city leadership is unaware about such a large festival, then what other items are you on the dark about? If the mayor's unaware of such important events, it perhaps is un, it is ill advised to deter more events from happening like the Rad Dirt Fest. I now ask Mr. Rico, Ms. Riego, Mr. Devona, and Mr. Shu, please change your vote. This is such a painful knee jerk reaction to what could deeply harm Trinidad as it moves from a boom bust to economy to once supported by tourism. This ordinance would deeply harm tourism and the restaurants, hotels, and businesses like mine that are supported by it. And yeah, we had to do a ton of damage control. And I'm not happy about it. I've been working with them for weeks. And I took them out on our trails and showed them things and tried to get a booklet to give to racers' families so that they go around and see all the different businesses. And you're like, oh, that's happening? It was really tough. Really tough. I mean, like, like, like Darielle said, do you really think these racers come down and sleep in their car? Eat no food? Don't visit our businesses? Don't go to our things and leave? No. Please, don't let festivals with the alcoholic beverage. It's fun to be able to walk around town with a beer and maybe one day look at art or watch people race. It's just completely, I just don't understand why on earth you would do this to Trinidad.
Who else?
It's me again.
Darielle, Louise Lopez, what? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Um, yeah, I, I want to address the fact that I, I oppose this. Mr. Devono, I, I know you love music and such. I mean, we talk about things and I know all your jacket with the doors and everything like that you've adorned for years. And it just makes me think about these music festivals that happen downtown. They're great for our business and we're a fledgling business and we want to stay for a long time. And these events, even though we're not right at the heart of Main and Commercial that happen, we're still off to the side at a portal coming in. And we get these people that come by. We don't even have any other kind of, uh, thing to bring them in. Like even if they, I guess they have, they put porta potties next to us on, on Beach Street. Because at least that brings people, more people down, but still there's people walking. And these feet on the street really help us. I grew up here. I'm a high school minor. I wanted to come back home and make Trinidad the best little community it could be. Ms. Riego, I've been so lucky to work with you all these years and I respect the heck out of you. And you and I had a discussion a while back and you even said to it, you think this is a knee jerk reaction. I hope that that's. I hope that that still is true because I feel that this decision to to put the kibosh on these things, which we have done in the past, when we get afraid of something, we put on the auditorium, whether it's this or consumption clubs, whatever it may be. It's a knee-jerk reaction. And I and clearly, there are people here to speak right now stating they they don't care for it. We are your constituents. And if there's people who have talked to you before that said, I I want this to go through, I I wish that they would be here to address those concerns so maybe we could get a second perspective. But the more people that are walking on these streets, the more business that we get, the more sales tax revenue that we create to bill to our coffers. It helps pay for all the staff and all these upgrades and all of these, you know, utility infrastructural amendments and bill, sorry, I'm getting nervous because I am really excited about this. It it's gonna, it's gonna be a detriment considering it's like, well, all of a sudden we have these great things going and then you pull them out. And all because of, you think they might occur. Not because they have been already requested. Have we had any incidents necessitating all the police to come down? Trinidad's gotten better from when I was a kid. It used to be rough growing up here. Right? You remember that? Always watching your back when you're walking down the streets. It's not like that anymore. And and I think bringing in these people to our community, to our businesses and to our events is just an attribute which is going to make us grow. We wanted slow growth. When you and I were on the days together when it first came on, we proposed slow growth and we've been doing that. Not stagnation. And I feel like that's what this would start to do, is stagnate us again. Thank you for your time.
We have a couple of people online wishing to speak. Luis Lopez has his hand raised. Luis Lopez?
Yes, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, I do. Yes, we can.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Council. And and I'm not speaking tonight whether in opposition or approval of of this ordinance, just as a perspective. As a business owner in Los Anamis County and the city of Trinidad, for over privately myself personally and my wife sixteen years, collectively with my family, over thirty years, through throughout the years. And and you have a really tough situation that you are opposed with as City Council. But I'd like to give you this perspective of the businesses that you will be affecting or or not affecting. We're hearing proponents of their best business days allowing these festivals to occur. But however, I don't see any opposition regarding other businesses stating that their businesses are affected negatively when these occur. So I I will be that voice. When Main Street is closed, Commercial Street's closed, Santa Fe Trail's closed due to construction we've had in the past, you know, a couple of years and fifteen years ago with the major renovations on the sewage system. Anytime these major thoroughfares are closed, it affects businesses differently. And including my business that we have had for many years. So when when these thoroughfares are closed, sometimes it deters people to go to the nearest, in my case, liquor establishment for retail off-premise and go to the closest one to there. So when in in history, when these festivals have occurred over the past ten, fifteen years, when Main Street Commercial and all these thoroughfares are closed, we see a decline in business at my establishment. We see a decline in foot traffic as well as vehicle traffic due to the fact that the thoroughfare is closed and that those folks can't find their way through the side streets. And then with the construction on the side streets, including what's happening on First Street for the past year and a half, that is another negative impact where they won't drive on it. So I would like to just give you that perspective as well as far as parking availability for the downtown businesses that are not involved in the liquor or the retail trade business of tourism. It might affect them as well. And I can't speak on their behalf, but I I appreciate you considering shortening or making some sort of determination on how you move forward and acknowledging the other businesses in the community that are affected negatively and or positively. It's a tough situation and and I would like to reiterate the fact that not all businesses are affected positively for festivals or programs. And also, from a perspective of public safety, and I'll put on the the other hat that I wear as a commissioner, the thoroughfares that would be blocked and and have to be utilized, other thoroughfares for public safety issues could hinder the performance time of said public safety issues. And and that needs to be addressed. I think if it was outside of the city limits and the county, I would address that with my emergency management team and also our our sheriff and our fire protection agencies. And I think that should be looked at at a perspective of City Council as well with your fire, your police chiefs moving forward and making your decisions. So I thank you for your time and I thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. We have Phoenix Lopez. Phoenix Lopez, are you still with us?
Yeah, he's there. He's muted.
I think you're muted, Phoenix.
Mayor, I don't have a comment either way. I think Commissioner Luis Lopez, thank you so much. What do you do? I think Commissioner Lopez or Business Owner Luis Lopez are pretty much in any comments at this point in time that you are asking, but no comments, sir.
Okay. I want to make a couple of comments myself. A comment was made that it was the city attorney's idea of this ordinance and how it's to be regulated. You have to remember that we have a staff. And the staff sits down and they look at all of these ideas. And we see these rules and regulations come down from the state. So we turn it over to our attorney, our city manager, our city clerk, to look at what could be done with them. How long will they impact us? So what they do is they devise something to bring to City Council. When it is brought to City Council, it is up to us, to City Council, to say yea or nay or amend or however it turns out. That is their job. So to say it was his idea, it's incorrect. Today, like I said, I met that young lady that was here from the Rad Fest. And I'm fully aware of the Rad Fest. I helped in that Rad Fest last year, so I'm totally aware of what that did for us last year. I know that there were six hundred plus cyclists and hundred-some runners here. I know that they're returning. I was very thankful, and I mentioned it to the young lady, that they were returning. And I asked her, how many cyclists do you think we'll have this year? And she says, we'll probably have about the same.
No, she said eight hundred to a thousand.
You've already had your turn. It's my turn to speak. So I asked her, I said, there's about six hundred cyclists coming, or she told me that. And I said, that's really, that's really, really good. I thanked her for it and I said, I hope to, you know, this, this will work all fine, you know, when we do have it again. And I I turned around and I left. And they turned around and left as well. So I said, you know, I don't think that I was I don't think I turned her off. She was a very nice young lady. And I thanked her for everything that they're doing. Anyone else to speak on it that hasn't spoken?
I I appreciate the fact that you asked and inquired and thanked her for what she's doing. But what is the city doing to further support them? Are we reaching out to them? I mean, like, they came here and it was an excellent show. The whole downtown area, all the streets were full. And I had great business that weekend. And so what follow-up is there that the city does to support festivals that came and had a really good thing? I mean, they're, that industry is growing. And I'm against the limitation. I think really what I heard about the different festival possibilities, there's like three different ways to get, do something outside. That's does seem like something that needs to be figured out. I actually moved here because of the festival. I moved here because of Articade. Because I knew the sort of people and event that it was and that all my friends would travel here from another state once a year, at least once a year. And now I'm fully invested in Trinidad. I actually bought a piece of property within the city limits so that I could vote with the city elections. It's important to me. And I would ask questions about parks, like what happened, I know, like, the Blues Fest is here and it used to be in the park. Are we making parks accessible for festivals? Is there a time, I thought there was something about an ambulance ramp. I don't know. You hear things on the streets. I don't know. It was difficult to have a festival there. But then what about the times of festivals? Like what, if businesses on Main Street have a problem with it being shut down all day, what if you had a festival that wanted to come in and just do, you know, five to midnight Bluegrass Festival and have the streets closed then? That doesn't affect those people that have difficulty with their business. So to just limit it or cut it in half seems like, you know, not a fully thought-out thing. And I'm a person that's really interested in research. And so I started really thinking about festivals and like, how can you make this work? How can you support the businesses that are having difficulty? What is the real effect of festivals on small rural communities? There, University of Tennessee has a study that they did. There's studies out there everywhere. All you have to do is go to an E P U site and and read about it. And I'm just wondering if that's happened or if this decision is just being made without fully researching it.
May I identify yourself with you, please?
Oh, yes. I'm Donna Mantish.
Thank you. You know, we do have Central Park, we have Chino Park, festivals can be Kid Carson Park. All those are available for people who want to have small festivals or small gatherings. We've had the Blues Fest at the Central Park to accommodate. They decided they wanted to move it into town a few years, seven years ago. We have, everybody thinks that we don't do anything with festivals. This council has given a lot of money to festivals and groups that do things in town. We give five percent of the marijuana funds to nonprofits in the city. It goes to the Trinidad Community Foundation and they are, rather than us sit there and look at all of the applications, we give them the money so that they can, they they go ahead and dish and and they interview peoples. And they distribute the the funds as they see as necessary. So, you know, we we do help the community in a in a great way. We are open. Our police department is very flexible in helping when it's needed to patrol these festivals. So like I said, I think that we try to do the best job that we possibly can. Is there anyone else to speak that has not spoken? Not, room is closed. Sacramento Inordinance Amending of Chapter Three Alcohol Beverages of the Code Of Ordinance of the City of Trinidad Regarding Alcohol Beverage Festivals. Entertain motion with the current, the way it's currently devised. Entertain motion?
So moved.
Second? Second. Discussion, Mr. Debona?
No, I'm not going to change it.
Okay. Who's speaking?
Not a discussion, but just a statement. I think what, we're saying one thing and you all are hearing something else. All the festivals that you've mentioned, Blues Fest, the Rad Dirt Festival, the Articade, falls under special events. Those events are, the alcohol is provided through the entertainment district. Where that has nothing to do with the alcohol festivals. We're just merely trying to make an equal playing field for everybody within the city. It's a compromise, guys. We're going to try it. If it doesn't work, come back and tell us it's not working and tell us why. And we'll reconsider and think about it again. We haven't made the vote yet. The vote isn't made, but it's, we not only have to think about the people that like festivals, we have to think about the people that are downtown. I can't just make my decisions based on one faction within the community. I have to base my decisions on everything that is affected within the community. And I don't think you're understanding what we're trying to do. You could have twenty alcohol festivals in Chino Park or as long as you don't affect the the traffic routes. We're not limiting alcohol festivals. We're limiting those that impede traffic downtown, period.
Yeah, I kind of have to agree because if you look at it with the Articade, Blues Fest and all that, that's
None of those apply.
That's what I say. So those are three weekends that usually close Main Street. So if you add the other four to it, that's eight weekends and that only leaves four weekends that'll be open. And I think that the people who have businesses deserve to have that kind of freedom. They they need to have their business too. So that's why I I would kind of agree with Karen on that.
Once again, I'd point out that nothing in this ordinance does anything to mitigate the concerns that business owners have raised. Not a darn thing. It doesn't have anything to do with traffic. It doesn't have anything to do with parking. Doesn't anything do with keeping the sidewalks clear or the use of restrooms within facilities. Those are the concerns that we that people have raised. There are problems with having festivals downtown. This doesn't do anything about that, not anything about that. So if we need to address those things, that's what we should be doing. What this does is it sends a message to the world that we're only going to have four festivals that are going to in any way touch Main, Commercial, Santa Fe Trail, and Anamis in Nevada. That, it doesn't even have to take up the whole street. If, and I just, I think it's a really bad message. It doesn't address what the problems are.
Mr. Durman, come here.
I agree with Oboltry. We're making a problem where there where there was never a problem, now there's a bunch of issues that are non-issues. So I don't even know why we're talking about that like what Oboltry said. We need to talk about sidewalks and clean up after the festivals and what kind of mess we made and how can we get in and get out and make sure these streets and sidewalks are clean right after festivals, you know? Just, we shouldn't even be talking about this actually until we get to that point where it's too many festivals. You know what I mean?
Running for City Council, it'll be fun, they said. Obviously, this this seat has my name in front of it, Aaron Williamson. And I believe that's mainly so people can get a hold of me. Because ultimately, the seat doesn't belong to me. The seat belongs to the people that voted to put me in here. I think Carlos understands that. I know, without any doubt, unequivocally, all of you know that. I wanted to take the liberty, if I may, Mayor, to address a couple of things and I'll try and be brief. If you look around our nation, we're super highly divided on almost everything. It's unfortunate. Major events happen and we come together and it's it's days sometimes that we all are in our respective camps again. But all of us have come to this town or were born in this town. Either way, we're choosing to stay in this town. This is not an admonition of anybody. In fact, I would like to encourage us. I think we should look out and see that device. I think we should look out and see that divisive element in the country and try and avoid it here. Um, so when I say this, I say this with the utmost respect to people that have mentioned it. But I don't think that anybody up here is opposed to outsiders or outsiders' voices. Um, when we have new people come to town, I think we give them a warm welcome. I think, you know, if you guys that have frequented city council have seen that. Uh, but to several people's comments here, um, we have to weigh everything that's involved. Um, I for one am seeing a many people say that they oppose this and I, I understand that. Um, some people came and they said they're for it. Uh, however, it, it's a situation that, uh, we are exploring together. I, I believe if we could lessen the polarity, we would do better to do that. Um, we're all in the same boat here in Trinidad. Pretty dry boat, but, uh, we're in that boat together. We need to work together towards that. Um, you know, a lot of the festivals we talked tonight aren't, aren't the alcohol festival. They come under so many other, um, applications and it seems to either continue to be more. Um, this is someone's best effort at fulfilling the needs that are impressed on us from the state. So, um, everyone has the best intention. I, I think we just, if we can bring back the polarity, I think that'd be helpful to everybody. That's, um, what I have to say. Thank you for your time.
You know, if you, uh, if you talk to Marty Hackett from the tourism, and I attend the tourism board meetings and I listen to all of the different festivals and order of gatherings that they have on tap right now. There's a bunch. It's not just the four downtown, it's not the four for something else. There are several throughout the summer. So it's gonna be a very busy, busy summer. Uh, the four that we're talking about is alcohol related to that degree. However, though, there's still the other organization that can still have alcohol related downtown. So there, there could be like, Mr. Schu said, there could be up to eight events during the summer. And more. There are alcohol related already. So I'm not really sure what the big deal is here. As far as the cleanup and all that stuff, that's, that's automatic. That's something that each organization is told when they have a festival or, or gathering. It's their responsibility to provide the policing, the cleanup afterwards. The, everything that has to go along with controlling, uh, that event. That has, that, that's, that, I mean, we don't even need to talk about it, cause that's part of it. One thing I wanted to mention, this is really bugging me. You know, people call new residents that come to this community outsiders. If there's one thing that you really want, it, it gives a bad connotation. If I went into another, another community and they called me an outsider, automatically I would think, they don't want me here. I don't call new re, new residents outsiders. I would like for us to change our language to say these are residents, new residents of this community. Or they're tourists that are passing through. If we really want to do a service to our new residents, please call them appropriate.
Mayor.
Yes?
Just a statement, just so you'll understand some of the workings of this ordinance. Uh, the Hispanic Chamber came for a liquor license. They're closing down Main Street. They're having a festival on Main Street. It doesn't, it doesn't fall under the parameters of an alcohol festival. It's a special event. You could have as many of those as you want. So, and I think you gotta understand the mechanics of the ordinance.
With that being said, call a vote?
Tabano?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
No.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Nope.
Williamson?
No.
Rico?
Motion passes four to three. We'll keep the event the way it is. In the event that we realize that we need to open it up again, that can be done. It's so much easier to go forward than to go backward. Because if we, let's say, throw open and add six and all of a sudden there's all kinds of issues and the residents and the community come back and says, what the heck did you guys do? And then we're starting to take away, then we're really gonna have an uproar. So I'd rather be able to move forward and move backward. On item seven, unfinished business, seven eight. With consideration of the appointment to the planning and zoning and variance commission. Turn this over to legal counsel.
Mayor, thank you, members of council. So as I indicated in my memo to you, Ms. Danielle Rollo was, excuse me. Well, there were, there were two names for one vacancy on planning and zoning. Ms. Danielle Rollo and also Mr. Pat Howlett. And what was done, the procedure that was implemented is that planning and zoning was allowed to basically select, uh, who they preferred from amongst those two names to fill the one vacancy. Um, they advanced the name of Ms. Rollo. That came before council and council, I believe it was on the consent agenda, affirmed the selection of Ms. Rollo. That has been, and that was pursuant to the, um, resolution that was passed in two thousand and eighteen, which is Resolution Number fifteen fifty. I have a copy of that for all of you in my memo. Um, that resolution said, and, and back in two thousand and eighteen, a number of board and commission members had come to us, I think staff initially, and had asked that the boards and commissions be able to have a say in who was getting on their boards and commissions. That is, they just wanted to be able to say and have a say in, in who was serving on the boards and commissions. So that is how that resolution was adopted and the reason why. Come to find out, that violates the charter. The charter, section eight point four, says that city council shall select and appoint, um, people to serve on planning and zoning when there's a vacancy. So having planning and zoning, while they did the right thing, um, they, they are not to select. That is for council to do. So I know Ms. Rollo is, is in, in the audience and, you know, with my apologies to her, to everyone involved, what council needs to do is to vote to undo her appointment and then take a straight up vote between Ms. Rollo and Mr. Howlett to fill that vacancy.
Can you call for a motion on that first and then we'll- Have motion to, uh, we send that vote earlier?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Bowman?
No.
No, sir.
No.
No.
Mayor, discussion pertaining exactly to-
About rescinding that vote.
Or issues at large concerning-
Well, just to, to resend the vote.
No question.
I don't have any questions. Call a vote on that, please?
Tabano?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Entertain a motion now to, uh, appoint either Ms. Danielle Rollo or Mr. Pat Howlett to the planning and zoning. Entertain a motion?
I move that we appoint Ms. Danielle Rollo to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No?
No, sir.
Discussion, right?
No.
My question that I was gonna ask the city attorney is how are we supposed to make a selection? If we're not able to talk to the applicants, feel them out about what they plan to do on planning and zoning? This is an incredibly important commission, as everybody know. They, they prom, they promulgate regulations, they enforce our variances. They follow through with the comprehensive plan. These are not just people voting on things that don't have a wide ranging impact on the property rights of people in the city. So I, I do have a problem with just taking a straight vote because I don't think it's a fair process. I think that the selection should be informed and intelligent. And I, I don't feel informed at this point.
Mr. Thurman?
I agree with Ogletree. We definitely need to get to know both, um, applicants, uh, before we can make a vote on which one we're gonna have for-
Mr. Williams?
Uh, Mayor, I was, I was under the impression that we would hear from the candidates, at least to some extent, before, um, proceeding with a vote. I mean, that was my impression.
Okay. Mr. Downs, any?
No, no problem with that. I think that's entirely appropriate and, um, yeah, I, I think that's entirely appropriate.
Okay. Ms. Rollo, would you please come forward and give us some information of your ideas?
So I'm just recovering from a illness, so I need to hope everybody can hear me, okay? Um, my name is Danielle Rollo. I'm a businessperson in Trinidad. I've sold real estate in the community since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, praise my family here, work here every day. I love our town, I love our community. I don't have an agenda to say what I'm gonna do on planning and zoning. When things come before me, I'll evaluate what our codes are, what the charter says, our master plan. I'll make a decision on each thing that comes before us. I don't have any, um, like you said, agenda. And I feel like this is a good time in my life to give back to my community who are serving on this board. And I felt with my experience in the real estate world, um, it would actually be a comfortable place for me to start because it's something I'm comfortable with. Thank you.
Ms. Rollo?
I'll show that. Actually, I think Danielle was a good selection. Um, I think, um, that we need, I'm a, I'm a feminist, I'm a married to a great gal, uh, daughters. And I don't think that board has, uh, the full representation of our community. That said, I do have a, a, a pretty deep level of experience in this area. I have been on and helped set up a housing authority. I have been on a planning commission. I have been, uh, a member of, um, I have been on a town council and I have been a mayor of the town and a resort community. Um, I have experience setting up accessory, uh, accessory dwelling units. I have experience in zoning. I own two real estate companies in my past. I have experience in real estate. I have not been here for generations. I am somewhat new. I am that new resident you have here. But I do believe in true property rights. I do believe having ordinances and, and, and code in place that's enforceable. I have to commit, uh, to say that Chapter fourteen is not well written. It's in conflict with each other. Go read Chapter fourteen of the municipal code. You will find that it's in conflict with, with, with certain paragraphs. It actually has a moratorium set. See, I'm, I'm sure there's a reason why I'm not appointed to some of these things. Because I'm going to challenge things that are not in bylaws. I'm going to bring things forward that are comprehensive plans. I'm gonna bring things forward that have been codified and are there. And I think that's what a commissioner should do. It shouldn't be an opinion. It shouldn't be an agenda. It should be, what does the code allow? Is the code fulfilling the obligations of the community to its citizens? Is the code and ordinances fulfilling the objectives that looks like are comprehensive plan? I believe when you look at their comprehensive plan and you look at Chapter fourteen, you will find that they are, they are alien to each other. There are things in Chapter fourteen that aren't, that, that are in the comprehensive plan that aren't allowed because of Chapter fourteen. I would like to address that. I think I could do, work well with the members of that board. I believe and I understood that that board had more potential members that could be added to it. I don't believe it's limited to one seat. I believe there's a real solution to this. I believe that it's, if it's open to more members, and my understanding is there were nine seats open on that board and there were only seven seat people seated. Put both of us on the board. Let's actually affect change together. Broaden the, the diversity of the board and increase the experience of the board. And so that would be my suggestion, if that's a possibility. And thank you. I look forward to serving somewhere, but still then, I'll see you guys next, uh, two Tuesdays from now. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the table in the second? We had discussion.
Can, can we ask a question? Is there actually, it's a nine person board under the charter, so why is there only one seat?
And I, I believe I had answered that for a number of council members previously. But the question is not now, are you going to expand the board or commission, right? The question is, there is a vacancy. And so what is before you, what has been before you, what has now come back to you is filling that one vacancy. I think historically, while you can have more numbers, uh, excuse me, more in number on a board or commission, you don't wanna have eight because you could have a tie vote, that could happen rather frequently. You could have nine, but historically, it has been hard to have a full board, even on planning and zoning. So that may not be an issue anymore. If you wanna have the conversation of expanding planning and zoning to nine members, you could certainly do that. But right now, the issue is one vacancy and who is going to fill that vacancy?
Can we, I can say we have a motion in the second, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will withdraw my-
You still have to, we still have to take a vote regardless.
Okay.
Call a vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Ms. Rollo, welcome to planning and zoning. And I think you'll do a good job, guys. Thank you very much. I had to make miscellaneous business, eight eight. First reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designations to the property described as original townsite, uh, block eighty-seven, lots one through ten, inclusive Mitchell subdivision, seventy feet, five hundred and sixty-eight feet. Original townsite, block one seventeen, city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Fort Wooton, Veterans, uh, Veterans Memorial Square, and set in a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to six P M. On May the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. I need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion from council? All right, to Ms. Hall.
Mr. Mayor, city council, um, last, the last, uh, council meeting we, we had was a practice run. And, uh, I kept coming back to you to, uh, introduce the applicant, Fort Wooton Memorial Square for a, um, local historic landmark application. And I'd like to bring up, um, the Chair, Luton Dawes and, and William Bill Phillips, the treasurer of Los Angeles County Veterans Council of Fort Wooton.
Do you have anything to add other than what you said the last time you were here? You have, it was a good explanation of what you were doing and what you're trying to do.
We're glad to be here again.
Okay.
It's, it's good to be in front of city council, in front of the mayor and staff and talk about Fort Wooton, which is something we're, we're very fond of. We're excited about it, being a historic landmark. And with all the stuff that's going on in, in the community, just incredible. Just incredible. Lots of stuff going on. And if somebody's looking for a venue, Fort Wooton. Thirty-one thousand square feet, we got it.
You have another festival there, right?
Get in.
Nothing previous in our speech. We've got one more of these to do, I understand. And to come before you on a public hearing for people to object or, or support. We want to hear their support.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from council this morning?
It's long overdue. Congratulations. I believe this is a very justified...
This bunch that you've got here now, I can see the difference in the management at Fort Wooton. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Anything?
I appreciate, I appreciate the idea and really appreciate supporting veterans. So thank you for what you're doing.
We're glad we're here. Community resource for all of us.
Let's all thank you for bringing it forward. Good. Call a vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Item A B. Annual report request to attach modification, re certification to common consumption area of promotional association found in Trinidad Entertainment District Incorporated. Maintain a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think Mr. Valentine, Mr. Lee is here, but...
And I believe, oh, let's come forward. This is their required annual report. And I think also to attach...
It was a new...
Right.
It's kind of slow coming with all of this stuff that they, wine festival, beer festival, and everybody's wanting, we're going to do it, if we're not going to do it. And why would we...
And for the record, we have Mr. Teddy Wilson for the smokehouse.
It's just... Oh, sorry. Yeah. And so they put me in as president and Claude as vice president and...
Howard Lecky?
No, it's what, Nancy. Nancy, sorry. And we're working through some of this stuff. Because there's a lot of things that, I've been on this for like two years, but there's a lot of stuff that was taken for granted through the boards, like the insurance and all that kind of stuff. And I'm trying to get that figured out, and we'll bring that back to you guys. Can we get it figured out?
Okay. Any questions?
No, sir.
No.
I have no questions.
Good to see you, Teddy. No questions.
Thanks. You guys are making the scene.
Teddy? I'll take care of them. I'm kidding. I misunderstood. You said there was a delay in membership. Is that misunderstood?
Yeah. There was bad wine and beer. The ordinance you guys were working on, there was a lot of people that thought we should just abandon, just shut it off. And I don't think we need to.
No.
Because... Yeah, absolutely. It's important to me. And that's what I've asked me, if we were being exclusive or including everybody. And I have hit everybody down the strip there. Bring them in, bring them in. Let's get this up. Let's do this.
Has the member, has it still been delayed, or is it...
No.
Okay, that means the people joining that you would expect to normally join, or is it still...
And I've asked different ones along...
I don't know if it's appropriate to mention here, but even if the alcohol festival passes as is, it's not limiting in...
No, it doesn't affect us. And that's something that, nobody was hearing that when you guys were trying to say that. That fine, that beer and wine, it's only four for the main streets. And then the side streets get more, and then private property is unlimited. But nobody hears that.
I don't have any questions, Teddy. And I just, I'm glad to see that you're expanding the organization and there's more people coming on board.
Yeah.
Because like I said, it does allow for more participants and for everybody to be involved. Thank you very much. Call a vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item A C. Match meter contract renewal between the city and Starkville. Maintain a motion?
So moved. Or second.
Second, okay. Discussion, is Mr. Veal there?
Actually, there, I think he may be online. He's in training to keep his CU credits up for his water...
He might be on there.
But basically, this is for an agreement for association, Starkville for water, where Mr. Veal is trying to standardize all the agreements as they go through. And this one is, was actually about a year and a half, two years late from the term. So as you notice, or you may have noticed, the mayor of Starkville has already signed this. They are in agreement with it. And I guess Mr. Veal is online to answer any questions.
Uh, Mr. Veal, you're online. Do you have anything to add to Mr. Valentine's presentation?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yes. They actually had a four-year contract that has been expired. They've shown that they've been able to comply with their existing contract. We've had Madeline with Ryan's Gas, our water attorney, actually put the contract together. We've added language to the new contract. It's going to be similar in template to all of our other contracts, which requires them to follow all of our policies and ordinances. And also while we're in water restrictions, they'll be in water restrictions. So they'll have to monitor their consumption more closely than they have before. We've also looked at their consumption over the past five years and taken an average and actually increased that into the contract. What? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we took the five-year, an average over five years of their water consumption and added that into the contract so that they have to follow that more closely. They can't just use as much water as they please. So that'll actually improve their history. They've also applied for a loan and a grant. They're upgrading their water system. They're applying for grants to put any of my meters in like we have here in Trinidad. So it's just going to help them conserve water more. So I think it's a good thing. They're looking forward to this and hope that you consider it.
Any questions from council?
I think that's a bit in between the city and Starkville.
So there's no major changes from the prior contract, is that right?
Yes, there's, yes, there are changes. Several changes to it. We've added a lot of stricter language that they have to stay in compliance with. Again, they're extraterritorial, so if we go into a severe drought situation, then they would obviously be one of the first ones that we would have to shut off water, which some we won't have to do, but they will have to comply.
Okay, thank you.
No questions. No questions.
I don't have any questions. Call, no question? Okay, call a vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item A D. Amendment to the Almoro Honi Pipeline Association Contract. Maintain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Veal again. Can you fill us in as to what's happening with that Almoro Honi Pipeline contract?
Yes, I can. I received a request from the Almoro Honi Pipeline Association requesting one additional tap. Mr. Jimmy Berger has some property on their association, but his water tap is actually not on their association. It's tapped onto a water line just behind North Garcia. His service line at that point crosses East Ester Railroad Crossing, private property which he has to have an easement on. It's an old galvanized water line that he has to maintain. So he's requested that he can relocate his water tap off of this galvanized water tap line and add one additional tap to their contract so that he can tie to the Honi Almoro Pipeline, which would greatly shorten the distance of this pipeline that he'd have to take care of. That's the reason we're asking for the amendment of the contract. I've attached two maps to show where it is existing, the proximal location where the existing pipeline is, and a second one to show where he wants to tie to the Honi Almoro Pipeline, which would be more beneficial to him. We've also, I looked at their existing contract, and they had just engineering, do a professional engineering evaluation of the association's pressized water delivery system. And they actually, at that point in time, it was agreed for actually an additional 35 taps, but they're only asking for one additional tap. And it, he already has the water, he's getting it from us. We're now just sort of relocating, getting from the association pipeline. And Mr. Jimmy Berger, I believe, is supposed to be there in the audience. If you have any questions.
Come forward in case there's any questions from council. There is no, like I said, this is just a basic amendment. Is that right, Mr. Downs? There's no reason that going to any other depth to change that number to the Honi Pipeline?
That's correct, Mr. Veal.
See if you have any questions from council.
I have none, Mr. Veal.
None.
I should ask you one because I don't think everybody else doesn't have any questions, but... No, I just, you were ready for me. No, it's okay, Jim. No questions, man.
I just had one question. On the background information on our report, it said that you had just had just architectural and engineering perform a comprehensive plan and professional engineers evaluation of the water delivery system for 222 taps. Is that the long-range plan to increase to something as high as that?
I want also on the Honi Almoro Board, that's our goal eventually. Right now, we have 200, this will be 201.
Okay. But right now, you're not asking for anything beyond that? Okay.
No questions. No questions.
I mean, just a question for curiosity. Are you going to abandon the line that pulls here now?
Yes, I spoke with Mark. We're going to pull the meter out and plug it, and he would use it as a flush line if needed. It's on...
Yes, that's cor, that is correct. Normally, we haven't chill and disconnect the line. But that tap would be one of the last taps on that line because there are, there's another one, but it's inactive. So the city will assume that service and will use it to flush that dead-end line on the galvanized line.
I don't have any questions. Call a vote?
Devono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good to go. Thank you. Item A E. Set public hearing at 6:00 p.m. on June the 7th, 2022 regarding proposed gas rates. Maintain a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Let's grow.
Before you start, I want to ask you a question. When we were, you were doing your rates there at the first of the year when we were going through all this? You said there was going to, there was no need to have any rate increase in that?
That was, that was a study done up until October, with the rates up to October. Sets in with the volatility of the gas pricing. A lot of it is due to the war, the Ukrainian Russian war.
Is it the gas supply?
Gas supply.
But do we not have a contract, though, that, for so many years, or comes down?
We don't, we do have a contract with the company, NPGA, where we receive our gas from.
Right.
And that's our gas supplier. And the way the contract reads is every month, they bid on price and they lock in a price monthly. So the gas prices have went up so much. Back in October, gas prices were about $2.20 a decatherm. They're up to $5.01 a decatherm right now. So that's where, yeah, that's where we're at right now. Their NYMEX is predicting that they're going to go up over $7.00 by the end of the year. So we're in the process right now of doing a study with NMPD. We've got them with us as a consultant, helping us out. They're doing a pro forma. I should receive that tomorrow. With our rough, over-the-phone conversations and stuff with them, we have budgeted $1.8 million for purchases of gas. With the estimated gas cost now, and then what we're thinking of going to go up to by the end of the year, we're going to be spending $2.3 million. And that's just on the purchase of gas.
What would be the cost for the customers? I mean, just roughly.
Residential customers, roughly, we're looking at a 6.7 increase in gas prices. And that's an overall increase with our service and our, and our supply. So residential customers on the high end, this would be like in January, December, average household we looked at, about 242 CCF. That's basically what they use. It would be about a $4.21 increase monthly. On the low end, it would be about $1.53. Businesses, kind of the smaller businesses, like your fast-food chains, they would be looking at an increase of approximately $20.00 a month on the high end and $10.00 a month on the low end. And then your larger businesses, like Walmart, Safeway, would be looking at about $272.00 on the high end and $213.00 on the low end.
Good information.
So overall, yeah, we're looking at about a 6.7% increase. And that's just to sustain us through the rest of the year. That's with operations and maintenance because of the pricing of the meters already as everything has come.
See if council has any questions.
So you can't have a lock on anything if it's monthly, right?
Um, we get a lock monthly. They anticipate what we're going to be using like next month, and then what the prices are going, and we try to lock it in.
Destimation?
And then we do use, if we, yeah, it's kind of like an educated destimation. And then if we do use over our allotted CCF, we have storage that we pull from. So we're not charging any penalty. The city, Trinidad, they're that gas folks.
So it's like a credit?
It's actual gas that they put into a reservoir that we, that we put in during the summer months. We can only put in during the summer months, not the winter months, but we can use it throughout the year. And most of the time, you use it during the winter months.
Right.
Summer months is pretty low.
So what happens if the war changes, things settle down, and we get a rate decrease? Do they give us that decrease after the 30-day?
No, we're locked in on that month.
Right, but it's the next month.
Yeah, so like right now, we're in May. They'll be working this month to lock us in for June.
Okay.
We're locked in for May right now, as of April, we lock us in.
So it's really volatile.
So it is volatile. And gas was pretty steady for a long time.
Yes, it was.
And now it's gotten a little...
I say cha-ching for Mr. Veal again, just sitting over there.
Yeah.
No, no, you answered my question, Jim. Steve did a good job.
I, the only, just following up on what Councilman Griego said. So if there is a reduction in price that you can get, will Trinidad get a reduction in what we're charging? Or are you just going to keep it at 6.00?
No, we'll keep it at this as long as we're maintaining and we're not losing money. If we start making too much money, you know, we don't, a lot of our gas that we purchase is a straight pass. So we're not making money on the gas that we purchase. We've got to keep that. Right now, we're losing money on that. So we've got to make up what we've been losing. And then if there is a decrease in gas, which they don't project until 2024 before it starts dropping, that's the NYMEX region. So at that time, yeah, we will come back and ask for a decrease.
Okay, thank you.
So you say 2024? That's what NYMEX is predicting this.
So why if it's that prediction why do we have to do a lock in month to month?
That's how we purchase gas because of the volatility you can't purchase it in the long term so we purchase.
But you project the long term.
They they're projecting long term but they don't know what it'll be that month. So if we don't lock it in monthly then we pay a daily fee.
But you can't get past the month you can't like.
No, no.
A six week lock in.
They won't let us do that.
Actually if I could interject we actually ten years ago or so or probably even far we locked in a gas price and we got locked in at I can't it was high it was like six dollars a decatherm and then prices went down and the company said hmm we're locked in so so we went with this this group of MPGA so yeah.
There's been a long meeting already I'm gonna try and make this quick I want to make a couple points up commodities and future trading it's a it's a bad bad case of Monday morning quarterbacking I mean on the electrical front and everything if you had a crystal ball you could make a killing to answer some of the statements that have been made gas companies sell on what's called futures or yeah futures and they are locked in onto those so we sell our gas into the future at a lower rate those futures are then traded at higher rates and and we as a gas company hope for our futures to unwind so that we can sell gas at a higher price anyway long story short the people that are really making the money are back east futures traders I did want to take this opportunity though to say publicly to commend Mike and his staff because there is there is a lot that occurs that people don't know about and that storage that they were speaking of I mean that that saves Trinidad taxpayers residents huge amount of monies if if companies specifically companies that nominate our gas error and we we come up short in a month those penalties can be upwards of hundreds of dollars a decatherm I mean potentially so we're not talking several percentage points we're talking tens of percentage points there so I want to commend the work that you guys have done you're insulating Trinidad from huge costs thank you for bringing that this this is seems reasonable for the market condition we're in and I I appreciate I I think that's everything that I have to say about it.
Mr. Crowe I think you're doing everything that has to be done at this point in time.
Yeah, this is.
You know this is just the way it is the only thing I was going to say in the future of course this is not I'm not even going to consider this but just to bring it up and like you said you know all this stuff is done at the stock market and let's say it dropped way low in a couple of years can council hedge gas? Actually I would say that NPGA does that for that for us.
That's what they're doing.
Yes, so they do hedge a certain percentage of our our totals I can't doesn't come to the top of my head but I think it's like seventeen percent that they you know they hedge.
And just to add a note our transportation seat Colorado Interstate gas is going to give a reduction in our transportation thirteen percent so that's all included in this study that we're doing.
Okay, so you can keep that cost.
Yeah, so we didn't have to go up as high as we thought so.
Mayor I had one question if I may just quick and I apologize for putting you on the spot in either thermes or cubic feet it doesn't matter what what is our highest month and was our lowest month a close guess?
Of what we use? Decatherm's probably December January we use about ninety thousand lowest month is usually July which is about between fifteen and twenty thousand.
So fifteen to fifteen thousand to ninety thousand decatherm?
Yep, that would be the range from low to high.
Okay, any other questions? Just a comment Mayor this this is following our ordinances and P E C and everything so we're setting a public hearing for June seventh and there'll be notices given to all our customers and so that they can come to the hearing and listen to all this so okay just a side note okay. Colvo?
Debono?
Yes.
Greggo?
Yes.
Hogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item F consideration approval of city manager profile and process entertain a motion. Second? And Ms. Lentus is saying finally.
No, I should have warned Mr. Kramer that Audrey likes to put me through last Sunday in January. I'm beginning to take it personally.
So we're here tonight to kind of memorialize the process that we talked about a little bit when we had a work session with Mr. Kramer and so that's going to mean we have an okay from you guys for the job description the deadline for applications reach the requirements we talked about the selection procedures and the timeframe and also the wage we kind of tossed around a little bit so anyway I'll turn it over to you guys and Mr. Kramer if you have comments you need to make I think I everybody got the last copy of the draft from him so.
You know before we before we turn it over to council I'm gonna go ahead and read the summary statement I think it'd probably be good for the public to know what's in the summary statement and it reads like this in reference to the city manager search following processes have been established the reason why I do this is there's been some question as to hiring and the process that we're going to be doing that. Job description councilman with Lauren 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 Kramer from K R W on April the twenty-sixth twenty twenty-two and submitted their proposals for the city manager's experience education skills and salary K R W has completed a draft job description for council's final approval. Deadline for applications it is K R W's plan to have this job vacancy advertised by May ninth on several social media platforms as well as professional job boards across the United States. Requirements for applicants during the discussion with K R W council agreed that the applicant should have a minimum of bachelor's degree in a related field as well as a minimum of five years' experience in roles with progressively increasing responsibility. Selection process procedures K R W will rank the candidates in tiers based on credentials and qualifications from this process and city council input the number of finalists will be selected followed by background and reference checks as well as social media checks at the completion of this step K R W will assist in setting up interviews and community receptions. Timeframe it is anticipated that this process will culminate in the hiring of a city manager by the end of June or the beginning of July. Expenditure at this time there is none there's of course some costs as many that we so anyway Mr. Kramer anything that you would like to add?
No, Mr. Mayor council I I think that just the steps that you've read into the record pretty much cover it there are two things that we would like to get settled tonight hopefully you had an opportunity to look at the posting we we're trying to encompass those things that that you highlighted in our discussion in the posting we think that it highlights the city pretty well we do have an amended which is a shorter version of the that I think Donna has has sent to you that we would recommend be posted the longer version would be very very difficult to get it posted on some of the sites that have some restrictions on content so and I don't think we lose anything in fact I think I'm very satisfied with that amended version which is just a little shorter than that much longer version the other thing that we would like to have resolved is I know Donna has recommended a a pay range we're much more comfortable with that range we think it's more in the marketplace it'll be it'll certainly be more of an incentive for interested people I will tell you council we have already done some outreach it's not even posted yet and we're receiving a lot of interest from pretty qualified candidates so I suspect right after we get this posted in the next few days we're going to start to see a pretty encouraging response to the posting.
Okay, I guess the one thing that we need to resolve right is that salary range what was it one twenty-two to one twenty-nine?
The range was one one twenty to one forty or and but he has on the posting one twelve to one thirty.
Yeah, and that's kind of his recommendation. So Mr. Kramer do you feel like in that range we can get some these qualified are these people that are interested I guess very interested with that range?
No, that that range that's in the posting with that's a draft obviously as I mentioned to council when we met last time I think that's very low we just inserted it there as a placeholder quite honestly we think it needs to be amended we're much more comfortable with the range that that Donna has recommended the I think it's one twenty to one forty I think that's in the industry is a lot more marketable than the lower range.
Okay, Ms. Aberd could you come forward please? She's hiding in the corner. The big question is that salary range I would recommend it?
It's going to have to be doable we need a city manager see do we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah that's your chance.
So his range now is a hundred and twenty-three thousand we do use the six hundred thousand per year marijuana funding to backfill the general fund so I would say that that's where it's going to come from but we continue to add more positions that that's where it gets a little bit tight so we might have to think about if we add any more more positions during budget time we really have to stop and think where are we going to come up with this funding and if marijuana should start to decline somewhat that's going to put a little squeeze on the budget as well.
But you know we need a leader that is going to be able to you know move us forward you know the tough decisions that we might have to make so I guess that salary range can be negotiated by easily put it in the hands of council to and from a recommendation from council or to the council through this council.
Counsel to counsel.
Counsel of council. So anything else?
I think so.
Any concerns or questions?
Just I just thought that at the beginning salary you know you have that salary range from a hundred and twelve thousand you don't think that's going to be deterrent for someone not wanting to accept the position?
Well you're right and that's what we're saying but that needs to be changed they just had that in there as a placeholder in that.
So it's not actually?
No, so we need to bump that up to one twenty maybe one twenty or one thirty or one forty even I don't know just based on those salaries I sent you you can see it's right we're right in the market on.
Yeah, we are.
Either budget number of employees populations I mean if we want somebody and we need somebody with a solid background experience skills we're going to have to I personally think we're going to have to pay that.
Mr. Kramer do you think a one twenty-five to one thirty-five range would be attractive?
Yes, I I think as you said that's negotiable I think that none of the candidates are going to expect to start at a higher range it usually is in the mid-range depending on qualifications but to answer your question now I think that if it was one twenty-five to one thirty-five I think it's much more marketable than what's posted right now.
Ms. Greggo?
No, I thank you I I read the synopsis that Donna sent and I think you put everything in there that we talked about and I think it's great it's I don't think that person exists but I think the requirements are great.
No, Donna I think I agree with you.
I I agree again with Ms. Greggo that I think it substantively addresses it I'm a compulsive editor however and I found several places where there was an inconsistency with the use of Oxford commas and and dash and and dash and some missing periods so I really have an interest in this being as perfect as possible when it goes out because I think that speaks loudly of who we are as a community.
That's no problem if you'll get those thoughts to or what you've identified to Donna we can deal with that very quickly it's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions.
I for one am a fan of Oxford commas.
I am not.
It's one or the other is what I'm saying that that's confusing.
I had a question is is there a way that you could have a guess the bulk of the new hires you do for city manager are they hired in what percentile of the price range could you have a whack at that?
Within the range as posted is that what your question is?
Yeah, what percentile would they be hired at the the majority if you could put like a scatter graph out there?
Yeah, it's it's our experience that most managers are initially hired in the mid-range and then there's always a caveat that of course any any increase in salary is is negotiable with the council and usually is based on performance so I think the direct answer is most most salary initially is right in the mid-range.
Okay, I I have no further questions.
You know Mr. Williamson I'm not sure if you looked at the scenario of all of the managers and their salaries that you gave us and it looked like that salary range was pretty comparable to the size of our community.
Right, no I I fully agree with that Mayor I was and I did see that was meaning his experience of hiring what what where the bulk is I mean because in that if we if we know that we can predict you know we put out one twenty-five to one thirty-five we're in that one thirty range starting now and that still that still gives us room in our initial range for for future.
What's one of those we you know his performance?
That's the only thing I was.
I don't have any questions call the votes please.
Debono?
Yes.
Greggo?
Yes.
Hogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, okay. Let's move forward.
Thank you council thank you very much.
Council report to Mr. Debono.
Well Los Angeles County Veterans Council is having more concerts the Cat Bucci Brothers played this past weekend and it's accepted very well.
Another event?
So yeah another event and also received this from Ralph Valtrey his father had this in some folder it's a nineteen sixty-nine sticker for Monument Lake intact and he wants to give it to the city to hang on the wall somewhere.
So if I put it in my back window will I get in?
You'll get in at the nineteen sixty-nine rate.
What was it bucks?
We'll hang that somewhere.
I did hear your smart remark Michael I did hear your smart remark if we repeat it about the big fish.
Tell them about the fish. Anything else? No, that's it.
I just want to let you know that I gave you a thank you. It's our theme for the for our fundraiser this year was home at last twenty twenty-two and I wanted to thank you all for everything you've done for Noah's Ark. It's a wine glass studio. Well you know what if this trend continues I'm renit by the gallon but I just have I don't have a report per se but I these last two meetings that I've attended as a city councilman have been the two hardest meetings that I have been involved in since the four and a half years I've been on this council and my first inclination was to say Karen just get up and walk out the door and forget it because you're not making an impact you're not understanding people are not understanding what my motives are being on this dais and doing what I do for the citizens of Trinidad the last council meeting that I was here it was really it's very difficult for me to sit there and listen to some of the comments made by all of us on the dais last council meeting we were called stupid and lazy council is stupid and lazy and staff is stupid and lazy and my first inclination is leave while you can but I made a commitment to the citizens of Trinidad to stay here and serve you for the best of my ability with all the talent I have the time I have to offer to you all and damn it that's what I'm going to do and I'll take all the criticism in the world that all of you have to give to me but there's one thing I will not stand for I will not stand for people in this community to re-rate the staff of this city who are nothing but consummate professionals there's nobody that has a grudge against anybody we all work well together Mr. Valentine Mr. Downs you know you've been wonderful to work with for the past four and a half years staffed all. Staffed, all of you. Detective Lay, Chief Backrack, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and thank you, Mrs. Rolle, for putting yourself in this position to do the same thing that we're trying to do here. I will continue. Do I like it? No, but I'm going to continue with, to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Space to Create Oversight Board is working still with Sean Rogan to put together a tenant for the commons area, but that's not completely hammered out, but that's in the works. And I would just say that I, on the other hand, am so grateful that we have people showing up and saying what's on their mind. I think it's a good sign for this community. It's a sign of democracy. This is what democracy looks like, as people say. It's not always pretty. It's not always pleasant, but I do feel like we're dealing with issues that we haven't. And I don't feel like we're polarized. I think it's really critical, though, that we have very open communications about the decisions that we're making and the stands that we're taking as a city. So I'm not, I'm sorry, it's been.
It's not democratic to call somebody stupid and lazy.
No, but it is part of, it is part of what you expect when you're up in the middle. No, absolutely not. Not, not the staff. I agree with you about that. Absolutely not. But as far as us as representatives, we are supposed to be able to.
I'm very respectful to everybody that comes into this room, and I expect that for me to get the same treatment.
I think we all feel that.
Yes.
What's on?
I have no questions. I mean, no comments at all.
Mayor, I have no updates on meetings that I have attended. Again, I just wanted to use a little of your time. I apologize. I wanted to commend just publicly, again, the city staff. They make every effort. And I think a shining example of that has been Mr. Valentine. He stepped forward in a time of transition and made a lot of progress. And we're now seeing what it costs to replace him. So I would commend you for that. I'm in no way challenging what Councilwoman Ogletree said, but I wanted to clarify, when I said we're polarized, I think the nation at large is polarized. I mean, it's very hard to agree on so much. And I think if we can come together and speak just with less emotion and less, maybe the word would be vitriol, that we would more easily understand each other. Because realistically, whether we were born here or moved here, we are here, we're choosing to be here. We all got to grab the rope that's beside us and pull the same direction. That's, that's what I'm saying. And I think you're right, people do need to come here and voice their opinion, absolutely. I'm in no way.
But when their emotions supersede their better judgment, that's not acceptable. Plain and simple.
Anything else?
No, no further.
I'm kind of in that same camp. I just wish that people would be a little more respectful. Unfortunately, we live in a time that is, it's changed. People are just angry.
Yes.
People are just plain angry. It just seems like when something doesn't go their way, the first thing they do is lash out. And they lash out at the people that they can lash out to. And that's what I'm seeing. You know, we were called that we were not a friendly community, that we were not accepting newcomers to this, new residents, newcomers into this city. I will argue with anybody on that fact. I'm going to go back to the days of when Dr. Byder was here. This community, it took a little time, but eventually what he did in this community was accepted. Some of these people that came through his doors, a few of them stayed here because they liked the community. We've heard that there's hundreds of people out there that are complaining that we're not a friendly community. I have talked to people that say, I love this community. I just like the atmosphere. We're not going to please everybody, I know that, just the way it is. There's people are going to come into this, new residents, they're going to come into this community and they're going to find things that maybe they don't like. And that's, and that's okay. But at the same time, they need to try to develop a sense of what this community has been, is, and can be. If there's one thing in this world that's a fact, then that's change. And I think we as a group, I've been on this dais for six years, and I think there's been a lot of change in the last six years. I've seen a tremendous amount of change in this, in this community. A lot of money has flowed into this community, whether it's through public or private partnerships. And it's just because we've reached out, I've reached out, many council people have reached out to do the job that we have to do. And that's what's helping us to move forward for what we envision for our community in the future. Like I mentioned earlier about the outsiders, I hate that connotation. I do. The other connotation I hate is people calling, people come in from across the border, illegal aliens. Do they come from Mars? These should be undocumented workers or immigrants. Let's, let's, let's start being decent to these people that come in. If they're tourists, tourists, they, you know, we welcome them. I've met people at the gas station, I fill in, talk to them, I see their license plate. I say, where are you from? I talk to them. We're passing through. Some people are saying, we, and I've seen people that say, we're looking to live here. That's pretty nice. I see people on the street, same thing. I welcome them. Do that all the time. Those gentlemen denied that saying that he has done a lot with gravel grinding and stuff. And said that we have caused him all kinds of heartbreak, heartbreak, heartbreak and financial issues with his. However, he only displays one side of the coin. If the public knew the other side of the coin, it would be a different story. And the reason why he knew is because he, he's PO'd at me for the letter that I wrote to him, to address him. The other thing is sending money out of town to organizations talking about the river. Because of the money involved, we have to put it out to bid. That organization was the only organization that bid for the project. Anytime that we want to do something, there's always a study, there's always, you got to do all that upfront stuff. Whether it was from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-two, things have changed. The state, the federal government, they all required new studies. Sure, we don't like them, but it's something that we have to do. So grants are a fact of life, and the only way that we can get these grants is to do these studies. If we don't do them, we just, we can't even apply. We see that all the time. One thing that's interesting, all the people that were in here tonight that were complaining about what this council does, there's nobody left. They're not, to me, that tells me they're not very interested in it. They're there, they may, some of them may want it later on. If they were interested, they would stick around to say, to hear what we had to say at the end of the meeting. That's my feeling. It's a two-way street for everything.
Yes.
There's two sides of the coin. Mr. Valentine? Okay, well. Honestly, I appreciate council for recognizing staff and the hard work that they do. I couldn't do my job without the staff we have. So I also commend them. I get paid the big bucks to take, you know, the grief that I'm on the, I'm on the salary and I'm not doing my job and all that. That's fine when they attack staff. So I appreciate council sentiment there. As far as graffiti, yes, we've had a little bit of a rash. Charlie has said he thinks we, we may have attacked. Not just, not just a punk kid doing graffiti, but people were tagging. So Wednesday, there's a group of people with PD, with Public Works, and a group of people who want to clean up. They're going out Wednesday. It's tentative, but we've got the paint, we've got the ice blaster. We're going out to attack as much of it as we can this coming Wednesday. As far as the Rad Fest, I need to commend Marty Hackett, Wally Wallace, Jared Chatterley. They're the reasons that Lifetime Fitness is here. They met with those folks, they brought them here. Nobody else but our staff brought them here. We've had the Rad Fest the first year, we've already met with them like three times in the city. So it's not like it's a new thing and people are taking a hold of it and like they're running it. It's, it's been a collaboration and Lifetime Fitness is glad to be here and we're glad to have them. So where are the people that, why would you hear that? Well, it doesn't matter. You get those folks that, I'll mention the trail that go out and do surveys and say, wouldn't it be great to have a trail? Well, there's, there's a process. And they go rally the troops against council and then, and then you're put in a bad situation because you don't agree. Well, you didn't have all the facts to come up with. They need to work with the city. Not one of them, you know, came in and said, hey, we want to, what about a trail, you know? They did their surveys, they did their letters, they did their robo-calls, and then they come, you know, it's like, and then you present to the city. Well, that's just, I don't know. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. You know, Mr. Valentine? I wouldn't mind you telling people about what you saw today, about the new survey. Yeah, well, there's a Facebook post, it's on Facebook, so it says Carlos Lopez posted a Facebook post that they're doing a survey saying that some politicians want the Welcome Center up at X eleven, and what do you think downtown businesses need to come, come forward and, you know, have this survey? I haven't heard one council member say, we haven't even talked about the Welcome Center location. We're, we've talked about how the location is bad where it's at because they took away an exit. We are working with the state to try and figure out what's the best location for the community, for the state, and for our downtown. And things like this that go, go north, you know, with a survey, our, our leaders of the state are going to see that and say, what's going on? Why are they doing this survey? It's what happened before, it's going to happen again. Nobody's come before council and talked to you about it. And now it's out to a bit. We're trying to put it at X eleven.
It wasn't me.
Okay, thank you.
We were trying to wonder.
It's that type of thing. Anyway, it's, it's nine o'clock at night. I apologize, I had to leave a little bit ago because I'm old, retiring, and I can't go three hours without. I'm in your packet. There's an open house, a one-year celebration at the New Alk Mine, so that is Thursday, May ninth at three P M. And they're going to do tours of the mine. I don't know if they'll take you down, down into the mine. You might have to grab a shovel, but anyway, the invite is there.
Do you have any knowledge of a starting rail? Is that?
All I've heard is that they're, they're doing engineering and they're talking to certain property owners that acquired the rail right of way.
It's May nineteenth, Friday, it's not May ninth. Is it May ninth or May nineteenth? It says nineteen on it.
Well, this is from them. On nineteenth. Did I say May ninth? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to know which one it was.
May nineteenth.
Okay, I just wanted to know which one it was.
Thank you. Mr. Downs?
It is nine o'clock, and I always go last. And, yeah, but no. So I do want to say on my least controversial point, and that is, speaking of the mine, the Myers Memorial Fountain looks wonderful. It looks beautiful. I noticed that today. It's, it's absolutely beautiful. I want to begin with what is probably, or arguably at least, my, my least exciting point, but that is, there's got to be decorum, okay? And it is not correct to say that if you don't get a yell from the back of the room or applaud, that you're not being allowed your redress of grievances or you're being able to address your elected officials. That's what this is about, okay? If you get a sign up and you get your five minutes, you're getting your redress of grievances. That is not okay. And when people, and I'm sorry, it's just not, we need to have decorum. And that will, I don't know that that will help with the, you know, the anger volume and the rhetoric and everything, but it is appropriate for us to say, you don't applaud, you don't booed, you don't hiss, it's not an audience participation event. And if you don't, and also somebody said, why do you have the police here? By the way, I too would like to thank Detective Lay, who's been here for multiple meetings, had a number of officers here. And you see, if you see the way the meetings have gone, and then they say, well, why do you have the cops here? And it's like, you know, getting my chops busted by every person who comes up here. I'm very thankful for the cops. The rhetoric is getting higher, it's getting a little bit scarier, and our meetings are getting a little bit more like the, you know, Douglas County School Board meetings where people are yelling and screaming, and we're getting closer to that than the tame, mild meetings of yore. But we have to have decorum, and it's not okay to whoop-la- from the audience. I'm just saying that. And, and I used to be the one who enforced that. Right now, I am so utterly unpopular, and I accept that fact, that maybe that's not the best idea. But really, as soon as there was applause at the beginning of a meeting respectfully, politely, it is okay to say, no, you don't do that. And if you do not conduct yourselves, you know, there's not applause or booing or hissing or yelling from the back of the court, excuse me, the back of the council chambers or yelling or engaging out of turn. It's just, it's not done and it shouldn't be allowed. Okay, and again, people, I've gone to a lot of city attorney seminars now, and people do get to speak to you. They get to say things like, you know, they get to say things, and they get to exercise their First Amendment rights when they come up here. That is what they're allowed to do. And they could basically say whatever they want to. We don't like that, we don't want it to, but that is what we have to allow. That whole thing from the audience is not okay, and we don't have to allow that. And the sooner we nip it in the bud, you kind of felt it, it got worse and worse and worse and worse as the evening was going on. And truly, people are going to start booing and hissing, and that's just simply not okay. You go to a government meeting anywhere, and there's not applauding, there's not booing, there's not hissing. The next thing, and this is kind of touching on what Councilwoman Diego said, and that is, sorry for my bedside manner sometimes, but I do want to say that I make it my business to defend you. I make it my business to defend staff. I make it my business, I'm glad Sherman Leoni is still here, because I make it my business to defend planning and zoning. I make it my business to defend all the commissions for people who are being respectful and nice and doing their jobs. I like to try. I like to try, I like to be respectful myself, but I tend to give off the level of respect that I receive, that you receive, and that staff receives. So if my rhetoric gets high, I, before I did this job, I really made a living from arguing. And I know that is not what a city attorney is supposed to do. So again, I apologize for that. But when I do hear people say things like, you know, you're stupid, we're stupid, whatever, I, I don't maintain my composure and my cool, and I apologize for that. I also want to say, I will apologize for a lot of things. I'll apologize for anything that has to be already done. I'll apologize for a lot of things, but I'm not gonna apologize for defending you, them, I say them even though I'm part of staff and I point to Mike, but staff or boards and commissions or anything that has anything to do with the city. Mr. Howlett, I'm sorry for mentioning him by name, that's the second time he has asked a city council to have, city council is my boss, regulate my content and tell me what I can or cannot or should or should not comment on. My legal matters, my legal advice to you are the way they should be delivered to my client, which is confidentially, generally. And so if I'm commenting on legislation, if you have questions, if there's something you want to do, I mean, something you want to talk about, that's fine. But my legal advice and what I tell you legally is generally not for public consumption. And I'm sure you get tired of reading my memos, especially all those memos that I love to send on Sundays, but I'm sure you guys read as soon as I send them. I'm kidding, but that is how, that is what I do. And I want, you know, so I don't mean to overstep, I truly don't. I just, I comment and I do all that when I think it's necessary and appropriate. So with all that having been done, I will have another memo to you on some other matters, some things you may have questions about, but I have, I have nothing further.
I will say this, is that I know it's somewhere, and it might be in that booklet that I was showing you today, about decorum in a city council chamber. They do not recommend applause, you know, they really don't. But it's an issue that we have to face sometimes. Motion adjourned.
Subtle.
Second.
Second.
Call roll.
Devono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Those of you that stuck around, thank you very much.
Thank you.